Thirty-five P M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, and further extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-five, this planning board meeting will be conducted, conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting web agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event public access is disrupted for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
I Doug Marshall and present. Uh, we believe that Angus MacLeod will join us around seven o'clock. Uh, Johannes Newman is not with us at this point, at least in the meeting. And Jara Smith.
Present.
Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise and the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. And I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment agenda item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with their these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Alright, so first item on the agenda is uh review and approval of minutes. We have the June fourth minutes from this year available in our packet. Did anyone have any comments or edits or changes or any other thing to discuss about these minutes? I do not see anyone raising their hand immediately. Jesse.
Thanks. Um, I thought they were pretty accurate, so I moved to approve the minutes.
Okay. Um, anybody want to second them or is that hand raised to you, Bruce? Okay, Bruce has indicated he would like to second the motion. Uh, board members, any further comments on the minutes or are they just perfect the way that Pam and Nate drafted them?
Perfectly satisfactory.
Perfectly satisfactory. That's a pretty tepid comment.
But it's sufficient.
Meets expectations.
Meets expectations. Okay. Alright, uh, in that case, we'll go ahead and vote on the June fourth minutes. Please vote yes if you are in favor of approval, starting with you, Bruce.
Yes.
And Fred.
Yes.
Jesse.
Aye.
And Jara.
Aye.
Thank you, Jara. And I'm an aye as well. That's five in favor. And two members absent. Alright, time is six forty. Perfect timing. We are now up. Oh, actually, we're up to the public comment period. Um, at this point, if there are members of the public who would like to make a comment about a topic which is not on tonight's agenda, this is the time to raise your hand. While you are deliberating whether to make a comment and raise your hand, I will read the names of the attendees that I can see on my Zoom screen. We have seven attendees, one of which is Amherst Media. One of, and then we have Howard Ewart, uh, Jacob's iPad, number two, Ken Rosenthal, Maria, Mara Keane, and Pam Rooney. Alright, I still don't see any hands from members of the public. One last call. Okay, the time now is six forty-one and we will move on. Alright, the next item is a public hearing advertised to start at six forty, so we are in compliance with that. Um, this is for site plan review and special permit. SPR two thousand and twenty-five dash zero eight and SPP two thousand and twenty-five points dash zero one. The applicant is Archipelago Investments LLC. Uh, location is Gould Way and Lanin Lane. This hearing is continued, excuse me, from four previous occasions, May seventh, June fourth, June eighteenth, and July sixteenth, all of two thousand and twenty-five. So the preamble reads, request site plan review approval under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw to construct a new mixed-use development with three buildings, including a hundred and forty residential units, approximately twelve thousand square feet of commercial space, one hundred and eighty parking spaces and associated site improvements, and request a special permit under footnote A of table three, article six of the zoning bylaw to modify the front setback uh beyond the maximum required, building height to exceed the maximum allowed, and the number of floors to exceed the maximum allowed. This is located in the BBC Village Center Business Zoning District on map twenty-five B, parcels fifty-two and fifty-eight. Alright, do we have any board member disclosure that needs to be made for this continuation of this hearing? Alright, I don't see anyone suggesting they have a disclosure. Nate, uh, oh, and by the way, the time now is six forty-three and our member Angus MacLeod just joined us. Welcome Angus, and you haven't missed much. Um, and so we are now, Angus, just so you know, we're starting the first of the three public hearings for this evening. Nate, uh, do you want to introduce this evening's conversation?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, everyone. The applicant has requested a continuance again without testimony uh to September seventeenth, and so they are still working through the Conservation Commission and don't have anything to present to the planning board tonight.
Alright, so we need a motion to continue this hearing to September seventeenth. Um, Pam, shall we go ahead and say six forty again?
Uh, well, we could say six thirty-five. Did I write six forty somewhere? This was actually.
No, the, the, the hearing we're in right now start was advertised for six forty. Um, but if you want to start us at six thirty-five, that's fine.
Um, Nate, what do you, I said we can do six thirty-five. We don't have anything else scheduled for the seventeenth yet.
No, I think that's fine. Yeah, six thirty-five.
Okay, let's.
Okay.
Thirty-five.
Great, so I'm gonna call on Jesse and then Bruce.
I move that we continue to September seventeenth at six thirty-five.
Alright, Bruce, thank you for the second and thank you for the motion, Jesse. Alright, so since we are not taking testimony, I'm not going to ask for any comment from board members. And we'll go directly into the vote. Um, so we'll start again with Bruce.
Aye.
And then Fred.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Uh, Angus.
Aye.
And Jara.
I, however, point of a question of clarification. Are Angus and I allowed to vote on the continuation?
Uh, I'll defer to Nate.
Yeah, I don't see why not. You're not voting on um a decision. You're voting on a continuance.
Okay. Aye.
Okay, and I'm an aye as well. That is six in favor, one absence. Uh, Jesse, your hand is still up.
Yeah, how to procedural question.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I haven't been on the board long enough to know if this is a frequent occurrence with projects that they get continued, continued, continued. Is there not a mechanism basically to say to the applicant, let us know when you're ready, rather than us spending time every couple of weeks continuing it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I offered that um date to Kyle, to Archipelago. They thought they would have something ready by then. So, you know, I think some of it is is taking longer with the Conservation Commission. Um, there is a way, you know, we could, you know, we, we could push it out even further or, you know, we try to typically, you know, continue to a date certain, so it's, you know, if, for instance, in September, if it seems like really there's no progress, maybe we just say like December, you know, like, but it's, it's, it's unusual to have this um this many continuances. There's been a project with the zoning board that had it uh the other year. It was continued for over a year. Um, but it's, it's pretty atypical.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I guess we will move on. Alright. Let's see. Oh, that's interesting. Pam, the way this was advertised or listed in the next one, the next one was advertised for six thirty-five, so I guess we're in compliance on that too.
You know, uh, are you looking at the opening comments?
I am, I am.
Well, guess what? I think my imperfections are showing. So the agenda.
Ah, yes.
Um, the agenda was Archipelago at six thirty-five and the inclusionary zoning public hearing is at six forty. And then the article five ADUs, that's going to be six forty-five. Sorry for that confusion.
Yeah, I do see that in the agenda that you sent me.
Yep.
So, uh, okay, thanks for the correction.
You're welcome.
So just for the record, the hearing that we just continued was really advertised for six thirty-five. I was incorrect about that. Alright, so we'll start the next public hearing now at six forty-eight. Um, advertised for six forty uh on the zoning bylaw, article fifteen, inclusionary zoning to consider amending section fifteen point one seven one of the zoning bylaw by adding new text that would allow for project-specific determination of the fees in lieu value for affordable units to be made by the permit granting authority. This is continued from August sixth of this year. Alright, so Nate, I suspect you should start us off here and are you going to share that word document you brought, you sent us a couple of days ago?
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Uh, yeah, the, I'll, I can just give a summary and then I can share my screen. So, you know, after the planning board hearing, the CRC opened their hearing last week and discussed this amendment. Uh, there were some questions about, you know, median family income and kind of what's the kind of like, what's the base number and what's the multiplier? Um, you know, they, they, you know, uh, you know, they kind of want to get at what's the kind of purpose of the payment in lieu? Um, you know, is it to construct a new unit? Is it to, you know, how would the town or trust leverage it? Uh, and they suggested, you know, a small change to the factors and the criteria that are considered. Uh, they continued it, I think, really just to have the planning board um have a future discussion. I think that, you know, they were seemed pretty uh comfortable with with it. You know, there were some questions about the range. You know, so ten times the median family income, they thought was pretty high. Um, you know, I think Gaston isn't here this evening. He emailed me and he said, you know, what he's seen through the two hearings are friendly amendments, so you know, there's a few, been a few suggestions by the planning board and CRC. And, you know, he, his point is to stress, you know, flexibility and um, and, you know, and ability not necessarily to have to change, you know, every so frequently. So, um, for instance, you know, there was discussion of could you have a narrower range or say a more precise calculation of development costs, which I think is actually difficult to get to pin to. But right now, we could say, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. But then next year, we might have to then change the bylaw and go through this process to say five hundred thousand. And then the year after, say whatever it is. And so, you know, the range right now, it's four to ten times the amount of the median family income, which, you know, median family income says a hundred and twenty thousand right now. So four times is four eighty up to actually a lot of money um is, you know, what happens in that range. And so, you know, as we discussed, I think it actually, to me, becomes something that an applicant would have to, you know, if they're asking for this, it's a special permit request. So really, it's a, an opt-out of actually providing the units in the project. So it's an opt-out request and it's a special permit process. So, you know, it's discretionary and usually there's some discussion. So, you know, as I mentioned before into the CRC, I, I think that there'd be, you know, some expectation that the applicant would, would provide some, you know, some information, whether it's their development cost or what they think is reasonable in terms of a payment and the board and staff can always then ask questions. And so, um, you know, they could come in and say, I think four times is what it costs me. And we could say, well, you know, here's our experience with recent affordable housing projects, or here's what we think it would cost the town or the trust to build a unit. We think it should be more. Uh, and then there really is a discussion about that. Um, I think it's really difficult to pin down a precise number, hence the range. Um, the CRC did ask about median family income. And honestly, we could say like a cost per square foot basis plus a multiplier, but it gets you to the kind of, it gets you to the same thing, which is a range of, of, you know, a payment amount. And so, I feel comfortable with median family income. You know, it's not an indicator necessarily of construction cost, but it is reflective of that, you know, the median income in the area and it goes up and down every year based on other factors calculated by HUD. So it's a reliable number. It's consistent. It's published every year. And we don't, we don't have to try to calculate it. I would hate to use some, some number that is, you know, put out by some organization that isn't as reliable or use, you know, the CPI and some multiplier and, you know, I, I, I'd, you know, anyways, I think the formula is what it is. There could there be another one? Sure. I think it works to get a conversation going about what the correct payment is. Um, you know, when I emailed the board, I, you know, I had two questions, you know, it really does it provide a good process and is the range appropriate? And so I think it's, you know, I think it's still something to consider. Uh, I'll share my screen in a minute. You know, the board last time had said maybe the, the lower amount should be five times the median income. Keep the ten and then add, you know, cost of delays to the factors. The CRC said they weren't quite clear about what that meant. Um, I think that, you know, if we wanted to add it, I think we could clarify it a little bit. Uh, and then the CRC, you know, wanted to include uh project costs in, in their, in the criteria. So, um, you know, and, you know, it says market conditions and other things, and they thought project cost was also important. Uh, market conditions may mean other things, not just actual costs for, you know, the project. Uh, so with that, I'll share my screen. If, if this is visible for everyone.
Yeah.
So, you know, what's highlighted in yellow are the changes that have been discussed over the planning board and CRC. So, five times, we'd remove the four. We'd add project costs. And then cost of delays. I mean, to me, we could, if we wanted to, we could say the delay in um constructing or occupying the affordable units or other affordable units, which I know i- is what it's getting to, but um, you know, and that's.
Sort of ambiguous at the moment.
Right. And, you know, and I, I think, you know, the, the question of what's the purpose of this? And I, you know, I've said it and I'll say it again, that when we looked at this, the consultant we, um, the town hired said, you know, sometimes they would see the payment in lieu option of being something that's kind of a high bar, right? So you don't want to have it be such a low payment that it's easy for a developer to opt out every time. Um, and so the, you know, this is a special permit, so it is a discretionary, so we don't have to say yes. Uh, and then, you know, they also, just to clarify, in this section of the zoning bylaw, if it's six or more affordable units um are required by the project, half of them have to be provided anyways. And so, you know, they have the ability then to ask for half of them to be located off-site within five hundred feet or the same zoning district or this payment option. It could be a combination of those. You know, if it's fewer than six required affordable units, you know, there's, they could, they could ask for um different, you know, different options as well. Or, um, and so like I, you know, I think I, I may have mentioned, but to the CRC, sometimes I think a smaller project that only has one affordable unit or maybe two, even three, they might say, well, is, you know, if a developer is not familiar with affordable housing, maybe the payment option is something that they're seeking because they just, they don't understand affordable housing or they, you know, that to hire uh an agency to do the affirmative fair marketing and monitor the units might just seem like a lot of work. You know, staff can always talk to them about that. There's examples in town now where this has happened. So I feel like, I think there's kind of more understanding and knowledge of how affordable housing works than there was just five years ago in Amherst. So, um, but, you know, I, I think we, we have this option and, you know, uh, really, this was in response to one product where the board didn't think the bylaw offered flexibility. And so, you know, what's offered here is flexibility. I, you know, I feel like this could be written another way as well to get at some number. Um, but for now, I think it's fine.
Alright, Nate, we've got three hands up, four hands, so everybody's eager to comment. We'll start with you, Bruce.
Well, for the moment, I'm not going to repeat anything that I said last time.
Thank you.
But I'm, I'm simply going to say, I think the, the cause of confusion with the CRC is because they've got cost of delays plural. That indicates that somehow the project itself may be delayed in some way. And that's absolutely not what I was proposing. It's simply cost of delay. It's the delay between when the affordable housing becomes uh online as created by a project that's already underway and when affordable housing would come online if the payment in lieu is made, when the whole damn thing has to be ramped up and so forth. So it's the cost of that delay, which may or may not be considered relevant, but it's the proposal of including that phrase, cost of delay singular in here is to uh uh trigger uh the question. And uh, and there may be some reason why actually the delay is significant and uh, and, and, and the, there is a cost as determined by the planning staff, perhaps as advised by the housing trust, and that some dollar amounts flows from that. Um, I don't know whether we need, apart from getting rid of that S, uh, need to explain that, but uh, um, I mean, we could equally say, well, project location, project costs, they all need to be explained, but I think um, if people need to uh understand what is meant by that, they simply come back to the minutes of this discussion from years previous and they read it. Because the only entity that needs to know this is the planning board and the planning staff. I mean, primarily because they can then explain it to applicants and whomever else is interested. So cost of delay is all I would suggest. Uh, uh, deleting that S is all that I would suggest that will make uh make it clearer. I wonder, so, so uh, I think that you mean to have the, the four times um parenthesis, sorry, the four parenthesis four should be deleted, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think that's a discussion point. So if the board, you know, makes a, you know, makes a decision tonight on some of these back, you know, ideas, then I can, you know, I would clean this up as we go. So, you know, we think, you know, right now, I'm just showing both options. You know, it was proposed that it's, it's four now. Um, and then no more than ten times. And then the idea was uh, suggested having five, so I'm just keeping both.
Yeah, okay. Well, I've made my case for five. I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug. That's it.
Thanks, Bruce. Jara.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I agree with everything that Bruce just said. Uh, I'm curious, but Nate, maybe you could remind me, like, who names the multiplier or the figure or the range? Is that provided to us by staff? Is that initially proposed by the Affordable Housing Trust? Um, and who is in charge of providing data related to market conditions, project costs, unit sizes, all that kind of stuff?
Nate?
Sure, thanks. Yeah, the, you know, staff and the housing trust worked on this. So the way, you know, the existing bylaw reads is up above. So it says, you know, shall be four times the current median family income. So, you know, it's a, the way the board interpreted that previously is that it's really just that number. It's four times whatever the MFI is. And so the discussion was, well, should we have a range to provide some flexibility? And so, you know, what the trust determined was no more than ten. I mean, it could be no more than eight. It could be no more than twelve. I mean, I don't, you know.
But I mean, like, who's the first person who says it should be this number? It should be here in this range. It should be X amount of dollars, or it should be seven times.
Yeah, so, you know, my thought is that the applicant is going to come with a request and they're the ones who are going to have a number. And so, if they don't, then, you know, staff would work with the house, you know, so the permit granting authority or special permit granting authority is typically the planning board or, um, excuse me, zoning board. The Immiscible Affordable Housing Trust, you know, would play an advisory role. So what, you know, previously, when this happened, we asked them to comment on it. But, for instance, if a developer just came and said, oh, we'd like to make a payment in lieu, and, and then we had this range and they don't provide a number and they, you know, say, oh, you know, I just want to do the, the least amount. I'd say, okay, well, it's four times. And I'd say, well, you know, north, you know, I'd say, say, you know, uh, Community Homes in North Amherst was just built and they're, you know, it's six hundred thousand dollars unit for that, for that construction roughly. And then to me, I, you know, I would put that in a memo or something with the planning board if it was through the planning board. And, you know, to me, that, then that's the conversation. The developer is like, no, I think I only want to do four eighty. And I'd say, well, given the location of this project, you know, they're large units, whatever, right? I think it should be six hundred. The developer can, you know, then it's a conversation during the public hearing. Uh, and that's what kind of happened previously, uh, except for then there wasn't this ability to negotiate or determine what would be a, you know, the payment option. Uh, so, you know, some of it's, you know, there is discretion there. So it could be that the developer saying, you know, look, I'm only proposing studio apartments uh or one-bedroom apartments, you know, they're not in a village center downtown. I think it's, I'm on the lower end and maybe that makes sense given the project location and the size of units. And so that's why the addition is, is added to the text. I, you know, and, you know, and it could be that, um, you know, for instance, I said to the CRC, a developer may have owned property for a long time. So the total development cost of a project may be cheaper for one person who's not acquiring property compared to someone who's buying a property, right? So if someone spends a million dollars on a property, there's site development costs or demo costs, and if someone's own, owns a property and they're just modifying it and they have a, you know, units already there, then that project cost is lower. So, you know, that might be a factor into this equation. So I think there's, you know, I think all of that would be discussed with staff and then applicant and with the housing trust and the permit granting authority.
Okay, so just to like, just to restate, it sounds like procedurally the, the developer would request a pay in lieu and present a figure that would be at least four or five times, depending on what the final uh language is. Then you and the planning staff would come up or would dig up some relevant data to, you know, either, well, just to give us a reference point, not necessarily to say it should be more or should be less. And then it's up to us as a board to come to a consensus on what we feel is the appropriate multiplier or the appropriate cost.
Correct.
Okay, great. Last question and then I'll see the, the, uh, see it to my, my colleagues. Have any developers who have worked in Amherst who have pursued a pay in lieu or built under the IZ requirements been asked what their thoughts are on this amendment? Or have any provided comments or feedback or anything like that?
Uh, we, you know, the, the, the product that made the payment in lieu, they, you know, they were willing to discuss a higher amount given the product location and, and units. And so, um, you know, they, they haven't been asked directly. Um, I think some are not willing to say whether or not how they feel about this. Um, yeah, so, yeah, I, you know, I think, yeah.
I would be curi-, I would be curious just to know, like, you know, um, I would be curious to hear what their thoughts are on like the range. Like, is that a, is that a good thing? Does that introduce, you know, uh, well, no, I, I won't go down a rabbit hole, but I think it would be interesting to hear the perspective of somebody who's going to be utilizing this program if they feel like it'd be a, if this makes sense to them and they feel like this is a reasonable way to go about it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think the, it is a big range. And so that's where, to me, I, you know, if someone, if another project came in and this were, you know, in place, I would recommend that the applicant propose a, a number. Right. They, they come in and they propose a number that the board and staff can respond to. Otherwise, you know, we'll propose a number, sure, for them. Uh, you know, to me, I, like, I think ten times is unreasonable for probably a lot of projects. You know, to me, I, like, I think 10 times is unreasonable for probably a lot of projects.
Right.
Uh, you know, and I'd say that, right? I, I mean, it just seems like a lot. You know, I do think that there is a cost. When the money gets to the housing trust, it's in, you know, it's a, it's a public entity. So there are additional costs in terms of how, you know, that may be used to, um, fund affordable units. And so typically if it's, you know, if the town manages it somehow and there's public procurement and prevailing wages, that's, you know, we could say there's a 20 to 30% increase in cost compared to, say, a private development. Uh, so some of it would be all those factors considered. Uh, but I'd really encourage an applicant to say, here's what I think is appropriate and why. And so, you know, what, I mean, right now saying shall be four times, it doesn't offer that. I mean, if we said at least four times,
Right.
then it, it might get to the same, same place. I think the range is just, you know, right, it, it offers that kind of the low and the high.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Jara. Jesse.
Thanks. Um, one minor thing and one actual comment. I think the B is in the wrong place. Provided shall be at least five times more, but that's a minor grammar thing. My real comment is I'm a little confused or uncomfortable, and I think I'm thinking similar to Joe. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that this is a negotiation with the board. Like, I, certainly I don't feel qualified to figure what the number is. If staff and the housing trust are, why isn't this written as it shall be at least five times more as determined by staff with consultation from the housing trust? Because it should not be an applicant coming here trying to convince us, oh, it's only worth this much money and here's why. Like, it, again, it, it just feels a little strange and outside, at least of the, certainly the expertise I have, and I think collectively as a board, I'm not sure we're qualified to set that number. So why are we the ones deciding what the number is?
All right, Jesse. Um, I will say you're reminding me of some of the parking conversations I've had with developers about how many parking spaces they needed to provide. And it was up to us to either accept or reject the arguments that the developers were making with all of the expertise on the board, which was not very much. So. Uh, I guess Jesse, you're finished and, uh,
Yeah, I guess, just to sum it up.
I don't know if Nate wants to respond to that.
If, if there was a definitive body that could make the number, that would be more logical to me.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing that, I mean, I'm going to jump in here. I see the three, three hands we have now. Um, uh, you know, this came up because we were, we had an applicant, we had the previous bylaw. And I think it was the housing trust that said, hey, you know, that's four times seems low. Well, I mean, one response we could do is we just change four to six or, or eight or, you know, 20, whatever. And, and then see if anybody ever uses it, which we don't really want to encourage anyway. So, you know, instead of getting into the negotiation, we could just bump it up and, you know, maybe somebody would use it in 10 years and we'd say, oh, well, maybe we need to bump it up again.
If I can just continue, I, I do like the idea of a range though, because I was surprised with the Hastings project that the housing trust said, yes, that's great, have them pay. So there's clearly project by project specific, hmm, what makes sense from the housing trust perspective. And that's why I'm thinking maybe they should be involved in determining what's appropriate for each project.
Well, I mean, Nate did say that they'd be advising, you know, in that situation, but you're right, it's not mentioned here in the bylaw, so that's not automatic.
Yeah, sorry, just to jump, but I, I know, um, the other day when I seen that, I feel like adding it here, we could say, you know, like something like with consultation from the trust, but I do think it might be important to add something here about the, about the trust. You know, because otherwise it's, it would be only at the request of the permit granting authority that they weigh in. It could be that, you know, the permit granting authority doesn't even ask their, their.
Yeah, I mean, that's a nice reminder and, you know, I, I know the applicant from earlier, they talked with the housing trust before it ever got to us.
Right.
And, um, not everybody would do that. This, this might encourage that. All right, all right. Moving along with the other hands, Fred, you are next.
Um, yeah, I, I'm not all warm and fuzzy around project costs, um, without a little additional language there, maybe capitalized or something. I'm not sure how that is supposed to be calculated. And I think it probably should be. And I'm wondering if there's a, maybe just capitalized or something, but, uh, could we?
Well, Fred, um, you know, I guess I, I will comment on that quickly because I deal with this a lot in the work that I do. I think this is actually project soft costs, which, which is a term of art that includes the, the non-construction costs associated with getting something built. So it's designer fees and it's permitting costs and engineering and that kind of thing. So, you know, to me, if we added soft costs, it would be pretty clear.
Well, that, that would definitely be helpful because I took this, uh, clearly the wrong way. And I wouldn't be the only one, but thank you.
Okay. Nate, what is that consistent with what you thought this was?
I mean, I think it could be both, right? Soft costs and construction costs. So we could say like total development cost. I mean, to me, the TDC is a more, is how you'd refer to it with housing.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, we could, we could say soft costs, construction costs, right? We could even just, you know, I, I don't.
Well, if total development cost is a, 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 a standard term of art in the affordable housing world and it it includes everything you, that it takes to get a project built, then that might be perfectly appropriate. Okay. All right. Fred, anything else?
Well, then you take out cost of delay in the last line.
Ah, well, I think, I think Bruce would object to that.
Well, then I, then I want to know a little more about exactly what that is.
Well, I mean, you know, the cost, I still think cost of delay is kind of ambiguous to anybody who's not going to listen to our minutes here. Um, I think it's the cost of postponing the delivery of the affordable units to a later date. Not certain.
That's exactly right. I just used delay because it was one word.
Right, but, but it's, yeah, I mean, it really hasn't been clear. And, um, you know, I mean,
I'm good with that substitution.
It's actually a social cost, right? I mean, we're not talking, or are we about, talking about the alternative cost of some other entity providing it later, maybe under a public process that has higher total development costs?
It's, it could be the cost of delay, but, but, you know, it, it manifests itself first and foremost in the fact that, uh, the people who would move into the project as, uh, ordinarily created would have to wait two years. So there's two years more rent they're paying, uh, and, and that's, that's a cost. And you're right, it's a kind of a social cost.
Right. So I don't, I don't know if we've actually perfectly wordsmithed that yet.
Yeah, I would, sorry, just to tell them, I, if we were to keep something like that, I would want it to be clear because it has to be in the bylaw. We can't, we can't ask folks to refer to some, you know, some other document or a meeting.
Yeah.
I understand Bruce, what you're saying and Doug as well. So if we like that idea, I think we, you know, we can work on a phrase or two, uh, this evening.
Okay. Well, why don't we come back to that in a minute? Fred, are you all set?
Uh, yeah, as long as we settle this.
Okay, all right. So we'll keep that highlighted till we get it worked out. Angus.
Yeah, I just have two comments that are kind of extensions of things that I, I mentioned at the previous meeting. Um, one, um, I, I think I'm curious, um, so I listened to the CRC meeting and the housing trust representatives at that meeting said that their, uh, their, their presumption is kind of the same presumption we've been operating under, which is that the goal of these payment in lieu is to, uh, mostly discourage their use, right? To, to make it costly, the default should be and is to provide affordable housing units. Um, at, at the same time, the housing trust, when they met here in our last meeting, also talked about the importance of kind of having bespoke policies and flexibility. And so to Jesse's point, you know, I, 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 I too am a little uncomfortable with us being the deciding factor, but I understand that the housing trust wants some kind of flexibility that they don't currently have. Um, at the same time, I'd love it if the housing trust came up with kind of a statement of how they view these, um, payments in lieu, what, what their goals are as a, as a group, which would help guide us in making our decisions. And I love the addition of with consultation from the housing trust. Um, so that's just one kind of general comment. It's not a change required here, but something I'm thinking about. The second thing that I, I briefly mentioned at the last meeting, but I want to maybe spend more time on here is, um, I, I've expressed and, and I heard people on the CRC also expressing that 10 times number is too high. And so I'd like to kindly propose that we maybe reduce that number to something like eight. So it's a five to eight range as opposed to five to 10, knowing that we can raise that number should we see fit. Um, I, as Nate mentioned, I, I too am skeptical that there's going to be many projects that a, a 10 times number, a 1.2 million number or thereabouts would make sense for. So I'd like us to maybe consider reducing both raising the floor and reducing the ceiling a little bit. And that's all.
All right. Um, Nate, uh, do you want to comment on those suggestions at this point or shall we go on to Bruce?
Uh, no, I mean, I think, yeah, I, I think a narrower range is fine. I think, you know, I think of the payment in lieu is, you know, like I said, I think there's probably different ways to calculate it. Uh, so we're providing one. And I do think it's, you know, I don't want to say it's, um, messy, but, you know, I think every project is going to have its own factors and variables. And it's really difficult to determine what is the right amount. So we could take the approach that Doug said and just say five times or six times. And then, you know what? And then a few years we realize it's not being used, maybe we lower it, maybe now cost of construction is really high or lower, so we change the number. I think the range is trying to get us away from, you know, having to adjust the bylaw so frequently. And it's hard to adjust, it's hard to get a bylaw to account for market conditions and variables, uh, you know, like a housing, like the housing market. Um, and I think, you know, I think the planning board is a, is a fine place to, to have this discussion. I agree, there may not be expertise on the planning board in terms of construction costs and market conditions. And, you know, staff may not also have some of the answers, but to me, that's where the developer is asking for a special permit. Because really what they're, what, you know, the bylaw is, well, you provide the units. And if you really don't want to, you have to then make the case why you think you can, you should be awarded essentially a payment in lieu for those units. And so, you know, um, you know, and, and I think that was asked of the housing trust, kind of like, what's the purpose of this payment? Like, how they view it? And you know, it's interesting, like, it could be that they recommend it very, very, um, infrequently. And maybe they recommend it because they, there's another project that the project has one affordable unit, but they know that they could leverage that money to then get more units because there's something on the horizon. And so, you know, you can't, you know, how do you say that in the bylaw? Or they need to capitalize themselves because they have, they, they're not getting, they don't have any more money. Um, and so to me, that's a discussion that happens, say, you know, right with consultation from the housing trust when this is requested. Um, so yeah, I, I think that there's probably, um, you know, like I said, I, I think that we would do our best to make it reasonable. Uh, and this is a special permit request. So it's not as if this is something that a developer is guaranteed or by right. It's really a discretionary permit. It's a, an additional permit, uh, along with a project application. So it can be, you know, a site plan review use. So it's a by right use with conditions from the planning board. And then they actually will apply for a special permit from the planning board for this payment in lieu. So it's a separate application that if it's denied, the app, the, the site plan review and the project, essentially unless they want to say, well, it can't go forward without, you know, if I have to provide the affordable units, I'm not going to do it. Then, you know, I think then it becomes a really, a big discussion at the planning board. Okay, why can't you provide however many affordable units you're required to? Um, you know, if they, someone says they really can't provide four affordable units, you know, I think it would be a fair question for the planning board in that special permit hearing to say, really, why not? Like, is what's, you know, you're providing them anyways. There are going to be market rate units. What's the difficulty or challenge of affordable units? And so, you know, I think it's a part of the bylaw. It's a public process. Uh, to me, I wouldn't actually feel comfortable saying, let's, let's have staff determine it. Really, it's something that should be determined in my mind in a public, open meeting uh, as part of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Bruce.
Um, I'm with Angus. Uh, last week I, uh, sorry, two weeks ago, I thought 10 was fine. Uh, I think I said, or I thought at least that that has a kind of a, 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 a slight level of gobsmacking intimidation. And given that our goal, or the goal of this is not to encourage, uh, payment in lieu, I thought 10 was a, a kind of a almost intimidating range. But I think Angus's, uh, more intelligent suggestion. I think, uh, the range from five to eight is, is a, is plausible and intelligent and 10's a bit of a show off. So I'm, I'm good with eight. In fact, I think I would join Angus in advocating for eight. I'll, I, I will continue to advocate for five because the whole thing started because four wasn't enough. And, and as you know from last time, I, calculations indicated it almost always will not be enough. So four to eight sounds perfectly good. And I think, uh, the range is right. Uh, I mean, that there is a range is the way to go here. Um, Jesse, I, I'm not troubled by this being given to the board to, uh, to, to make the final decision, to make a decision on, because we've, we're well, because we're very well supported. And I would expect that the, uh, basically there are three entities at least that are coming together to provide, uh, some input on what the right figure is. The first will be the developer. As I can see that that's the logical way in which it'll happen. The developer wants to kick it off, they will make a proposal and offer, and then it will be evaluated, um, by the housing trust or the, say, planning staff, uh, with the housing trust in a way, in, in, in such a way as to advise us. So we will um, come to a deliberation on this with, uh, being well briefed. So even if I wasn't well versed with this, which as Doug says, when we have to make the same kind of deliberation in relation to parking spaces, I'm no better, uh, informed about the generalities of that particular set of propositions than anybody else. So I'm, and, 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 and we, we do that fairly frequently. So I, I think we shouldn't be troubled by being expected to make this because we'll be well supported and well briefed. And it is our job to take data and understand it. And we'll ask questions such that we do understand it and then to make a decision. And to make a decision between the range of five and eight, I think is the right range here. Um, I, I'm not going to say anything more about the cost of delay, except to say that I've made the case. Um, if that, if we decided to strike that from the, uh, the list, I, I, I wouldn't go to bed weeping. I think it's a relevant factor, but it might be um, a relevant factor that's too difficult to make, uh, clear as to how it should be applied. So, um, I'll let others decide whether we want to improve that phrase. And if we've decided we can't, I won't object to it's being stricken.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Jara.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the, I have two comments, uh, and to borrow a phrase from Bruce, I also won't go to bed weeping if these aren't, um, agreed upon. Uh, I'm fine with the eight being the cap of the, the range. I do think we are handicapping our negotiation abilities if we do reduce it. Um, but I agree that probably there's not a lot of reasonable times when that would actually be reasonable. Um, second, the, I, I'm not sure we need to spend time doing too much defining of the, you know, and shall account for market conditions, total development cost, cost of delay. Because at the end it says, and similar factors. So I read this to, to interpret, I, I interpret this as a list of for instances. Like, these are major data points that should be considered, but we don't need to necessarily, you know, define them, splice them down to, to specific calculations because, I mean, market conditions in itself is a hugely ambiguous term and could mean a lot of different data points. So, you know, I'm comfortable with this being five to eight. I'm comfortable with this including the shall account for X, Y, and Z as is. Um, I don't know if we need to spend a lot of time nailing them down. Fred, I 100% Um, I don't know if we need to spend a lot of time nailing them down. Fred, I 100% hear your concern about it, but considering the fact that this is an, and similar factors, and that a lot of these terms can mean a lot of different things. I don't know if we wanna spend a lot of time trying to define those, given the unique characteristics of every development that may come across our board.
So Jer, would you be fine with ending the sentence at the word trust?
I would be, yeah. I'm, again, I'm not gonna weep.
That has some attraction for me, too. You know, it's like, when we get to the negotiation, we'll take into account whatever we want.
Exactly. And, and to Bruce's point earlier, you know, um, I do feel better about us, the planning board making that decision because we'll be well briefed, considering we'll have the data points of what the developer has proposed, what the Housing Trust has proposed. And I really would love some kind of thoughts on, from staff about where they feel a reasonable range within our range might be. Um, so yeah, I would absolutely be comfortable having a period after Housing Trust.
Okay, great. Jesse?
Thanks. Just quickly, um, two points. Yeah, I'm still uncomfortable with the idea that it's a negotiation, just cuz that leads to all kinds of, oh, we know this developer, we've known this developer for a long time, we don't know this developer, blah, 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 blah. I don't like that at all. I feel like it to be someone else saying, here's what this project should pay for this purpose, period. But I, again, not a big deal to me. Um, what about, how about language is just at least five? Don't put a cap on it. They seem to be, have different opinions about eight, 10, limiting the negotiation. If it just says at least five, it could be six, it could be eight, it could be 20, right? Not that it would be, but it leaves a lot more flexibility, project by project. That's all, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jesse. I will say I kinda like having the top and bottom range, cuz it gives a developer at least a, you know, a, 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 a worse case scenario to, to, to fear, uh, uh, you know, and that it won't be any worse than that.
Except we're, we're saying they're gonna come to us with a number. I also don't understand that, but that's okay, I mean.
Okay. All right, uh, I'm not, I'm not hearing a lot of consensus in all these comments, so uh, maybe we just punt it all to CRC. Angus, you're next.
Yeah, I would just say, I, I think potentially removing a limit could be a good future step. To me, that, that first step is seeing if we, if a range works. Um, if, if flexibility and options work, see if someone takes advantage of this. If the negotiation goes well, great, we have a, you know, some proof points. Um, if it doesn't go well, then maybe we need to reexamine having a range at all, right? Um, and maybe go back to a set number. Um, but I, 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 for the same reason that Doug mentioned, I think having an upper limit is a good start. And then if it goes well, maybe in the future, we just remove the upper limit entirely, or the future planning board does.
All right. Bruce?
I think Fred was before me.
Uh, well,
Maybe not.
Zoom thinks otherwise.
Okay, well, in that case, I'll say, it seems to me to support your position in trying to steer us to a conclusion on this, that there are essentially two questions we could ask. One is uh, do we agree a range? And the second is, do we agree with uh, yours and Jer's uh, proposition that we end the sentence at the, at trust? And, and uh, and I personally think, yes, we should have a range uh, for reasons to be discussed. And, and by the way, I think the lower limit should be five and the upper limit should be eight. But we could, we could seek agreement or consensus or whatever um, uh, on range. And then also on how we handle that last phrase, but those seems to be the two basic questions.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll say, I support the range between five and eight, and I'm maybe not an advocate, but I'm comfortable with uh, uh, removing the list of factors to be consideration because because of what Jer said and what you said.
Okay, all right.
If that helps.
Well, thank you, Bruce, for uh, articulating those two points. Um, Fred, why don't you go ahead and then maybe I'll ask for a straw poll on both of those?
Uh, yeah, I'm uh, I'm good with five to eight. Um, and uh, I, yeah, I think the uh, I'm also comfortable with uh, just uh, removing the specific characteristics and uh, uh, just stopping at the sentence at the end of Housing Trust.
Okay, all right, Nate?
Yeah, I, I would just say that, you know, as a special permit, it's nice to have some criteria. So I know it's not an exhaustive list, but to have some, you know, a few guiding points as to what that determination is and how, you know, how you land in the range. And so, to me, it's um, you know, you might say, well, that's part of the discussion anyways. I think it doesn't hurt to have it in there, and I think it also offers an applicant and developer, you know, criteria that they would understand in terms of how the permit granting authority would make a decision. And so, you know, I, I like to have it in there because, like I said, it's, you know, it's, it's both, you know, educational for the board and for the applicant, and it provides some guidance in terms of a discussion, how you, you know, how you negotiate the range. Um, so, you know, if it, if it was really controversial, I'd say, sure, take it out. But to me, it, you know, I think it lists a few factors that are important to consider and, you know, as, it's not an exhaustive list, so there's others, but I think it's a helpful um, piece of the statement.
All right, thanks, Nate. Bruce?
Uh, Nate, are you saying that it would help us as a deliberating board in uh, in expressing findings? Uh, because now what you've said reminds me is we would, in, in making this decision, am I right in understanding, uh, do, do I understand correctly that we would need to uh, establish some findings in, in order to support the uh, the, the decision on the uh, on the number within the range? So you're saying this is, this is a structure for findings is what you're suggesting, is that correct?
Right, in, in essence, it can, can be, right? So then you say, here's why we think it's seven times. We think the, you know, size of the units, its location, it's, you know, it, I think it's, I think it helps frame that.
But if it weren't there, we would do that anyway, probably.
Probably.
Jesse?
Thanks. Um, what if instead of and shall account for one, two, three, four, it said and may may account for or may consider these things. That way, the way for now is, we would have to account for those things.
Yeah, or with consideration of.
Should consider these factors, so that it's reminding us to do that, but it's not requiring data to back up each of those points.
Okay. All right, so um, why don't I ask for a straw poll on the uh, the range? So, I, I don't, I know Bruce supported the range and I'm seeing a thumbs up from Jesse. Fred's got a thumb up. How about Angus and Jer? So it looks like all of us are fine with a range. And then um, with Nate's endorsement of the last uh, phrase that we've got in the draft, it sounds, I, I'm kind of uh, willing to uh, to leave that in language, even though I thought it was kind of attractive to take it away. And um, but then I think we, we are left with the conundrum of the cost of delay. And um, I guess um, I mean, I think earlier I had sort of thrown out or made up um, in lieu of cost of delay, something like the cost of postponement in the provision of the units. I don't know if that's any, if that's a fruitful way to think of it or not. I'm, so, does anybody else have any other ideas for how we might wordsmith that so that it's, it's more descriptive? No.
Like, I think uh, what you said, cost of postponement is a clearer, it, it, it states more clearly what I mean by cost of delay. So I would certainly um, postpone the delivery of the units or delivery.
In delivery of the units.
Yeah. And then that's uh, that's the definition of delay in my, in terms of what I was uh, originally intending.
Okay.
I, I always think there should be a comma between and.
Yeah, I mean, I like the Oxford uh, comma myself.
Yes, I know The Guardian disagrees with me, but I have any number of arguments.
Many people feel strongly about that, and it's no, it's not been a clear consensus, uh, at least that I know of.
Well, my mother used, my mother used to say that uh, if you talk about, you go to the shop and she says, you shall get milk, um, eggs, bread, and butter. And if you didn't put a comma between bread and butter, you would come back with a sandwich as opposed to a loaf of bread and a, and a pan of butter. And from her point of view, and I learned that at six and haven't changed, it's a fundamentally important uh, piece of punctuation, can lead to all sorts of ambiguities if it's not there.
Right. Right, okay. Um, let's see, Bruce, your hand is up.
Oh, no, I'm just scratching my head. Oh, my hand is up, yes. So is the other hand.
Virtual hand, not your. Okay, so, so uh, does anybody wanna make another comment about the current draft that we have? Are we, do we think that what we've got here looks like a consensus for the group?
And so just quickly to just to um, discuss, you know, with the planning board, so there was the the zoning amendment that was referred by council, and so this would be the planning board's recommendation back to town council. So, you know, you've discussed the amendment and you think that it should be modified to say five to eight, and you've added, you know, the language with consultation from the Housing Trust and included a few more factors. And so that's, you know, staff would work on a memo to the um, to the council to explain that. So, you know, your recommendations are adopt the zoning amendment. So the vote would be, you know, recommend these changes to the amendment and adoption. And so we would, you know, we would, we would uh, show council what those changes are. And then they, they decide if they wanna keep those or not. And also, you know, the CRC is meeting at the end of the month, so I bring this back to the CRC.
And they'll make their own recommendation.
Right, so the CRC, I will say, they also continued their hearing because if they, the um, they have the time, the timeframes to make, uh, to get this back to council is harder if the CRC closes their hearing before planning board. And so they will typically try to close their hearing after planning board. It just makes the, the sequence of everything easier. So, um, you know, they didn't necessarily continue it. Thinking the planning board would continue it again, I think if you're ready to vote, you can, and then it'll go back to CRC.
Right, okay. So Nate, you're, you're teeing us up for a motion to recommend this dra- draft uh, as, as amended in this, in this meeting and our previous discussions to council for adoption.
Right.
Bruce?
Well, I just have to say so moved now.
Oh, good. All right, um, Angus?
Second.
Thank you. All right, um, I'm gonna ask for public comment before we vote. Uh, we haven't had a chance for, for public comment. Do any of the members of the public that are listening want to weigh in at this point before we vote on uh, recommending this to council? Okay, I am not seeing any hands raised from the five attendees. All right, we'll go ahead into the vote. Um, I'm gonna go in over sort of a reverse order uh, starting with Jer.
Aye.
Thank you, and then Angus?
Yes.
Um, Jesse?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Yep.
I am an aye as well. That's six in favor, one, one absence. We recommend the proposed bylaw as shown here on the screen to council. So Nate, you'll, you'll draft a memo and I forget, uh, I think, actually, I think Chris usually review, let me review it before it went to council. I don't know if.
Yeah, no, I'll share it with you, Doug as chair.
Okay. All right, uh, time now is 7:40. Um, seems a little bit early for our break given the agenda in front of us. So why don't we go ahead into the next hearing? Time now is 7:40. This is a public hearing uh, advertised for 6:45, so we're okay with that. On the zoning bylaw for Article Five accessory uses continued from August 8th, to contents, consider amending the zoning bylaw by rescinding Section 5.011 accessory dwelling units as amended October 18th, 2021, effective November 1st, 2021, and replacing it with a new Section 5.011 that includes a, concludes provisions for a local ADU and for the protected use ADU which are permitted by right in accordance with the Affordable Homes Act. All right, um, any, any board disclosures on this discussion? All right. All right, Nate, take it away.
Sure, thanks. Hi, everyone. So yeah, again, the CRC held their hearing last week. Um, and you know, I sent a document recently that had a lot of track changes and highlights, and it might be confusing. And we don't, we, we can jump into that in a minute, I think. Um, staff, um, you know, read more decisions by the Attorney General's Office, the state's legal team, they've made more decisions on town meeting votes. And so they've offered, you know, they, they're posting them online in their, in their legal review. And I spoke with an attorney with the town council, KP Law. And so I just, there's a few clarifications. And I think one's an important one, you know, with the local ADU, if we, if we want more than one ADU on a property, uh, then the second ADU has to be by special permit. We can't, we can't have it be by administrative review. So the irony being that we could keep a local ADU and say that if it comes first, it's by administrative review, but if the protected use ADU is permitted first, then the local ADU is by special permit. And honestly, I think that's a waste of time for the permitting board um, to spend, you know, have a special permit for an ADU when a protected use ADU, which is very similar, is allowed by a building permit. And so I'd rather not have a special permit process for that. We, we, we do it now, I mean, I will say we do it now. Uh, and so maybe it's not, you know, and to me, then we would wanna have the local ADU, right, have a certain size or have, have some reason why we still think someone would go through that special permit process, having already done a protected use ADU on their property. So I think, you know, I think it's a discussion point, the CRC, you know, when I mentioned this and I said, you know, honestly, I'm kind of leaning toward just having only one ADU, the protected use ADU and scrapping the local ADU, the CRC seemed to agree with that. And so I think the, it would simplify the bylaw. Um, we could reduce, you know, some of the conditions and requirements. There was a discussion about what size is a protected ADU. So it can be the state definition, or it could be larger. And so, right now, you know, the towns allowed uh, ADUs for many years, for decades, actually. We used to call them supplemental apartments. Uh, we used to just call them um, uh, in our building permit application, we just had a different name for them. So, you know, there's, there's probably over 30 or 40 ADUs permitted in town. You know, a fraction of those, a fair amount of those are probably over the size limit that's allowed by a protected use ADU. And many of those were permitted, some of those more recently were permitted special permit uh, that requires owner occupancy. So if we, you know, kept the protected use ADU to the state standard of 900 square feet or half the gross, you know, we're calling it habitable space or smaller, and we only have that one, the existing ADUs that are bigger than the protected use are pre-existing non-conforming, meaning that the owner occupancy remains, but they're also then allowed to do a second ADU uh, by right, the protected use. If we made our protected use bigger, 1,000 feet to capture all the accessory dwelling units we permitted, then all the ADUs we permitted are now protected use, and those owner occupancy requirements on the 30 or 40 ADUs no longer apply. So we can enforce those regulations. And so it's a discussion, do we, you know, do we wanna keep a local ADU and have two options? Uh, which, you know, someone might use. Um, you know, they might use it first, actually, then through the administrative approval and never do a protected ADU. And we're giving them that option of a bigger ADU with an owner occupancy requirement. We'd have to write into the bylaw, though, that if that's the case, then, you know, like I said, that conditional, if it's second, then we need, it's required by special permit. We'd have to write into the bylaw, though, that if that's the case, then, you know, like I said, that conditional, if it's second, then we need, it's required by special permit. There's no way around that. The AGs recently said that. So I was hoping that it was an interpretation that was different, but no, they've confirmed that in a legal decision. I think the previous guidance from the state was a little unclear on that. So I think that's a big one. Do we want to have two ADUs? And then if not, you know, what's the, what's the right size for protected use ADU? In the document I'll share in a minute, there's also clarification with the language. So the CRC had a number of comments that I highlighted in yellow. Some of it was, you know, like this statement doesn't seem to make sense, or is this regulation reasonable? They thought we should regulate ADUs in terms of short-term rental. So the legislation and regulations allow that. Currently, the town, we don't regulate short-term rentals. It doesn't seem to be as much of an issue, say, as Cape Cod or the Berkshires or certain places. But in the CRC is considering adding that as one of the requirements that, you know, we, it, it's a way to mention, you know, according to Mass General Law, they define a short-term rental, and then we can say we would prohibit ADUs from being used in that, in that way.
Can we do that?
We, we can, yeah, we, we haven't, we don't do it now.
EAG would be okay with that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's specifically allowed in the legislation and then supported by the rules and regs. So, you know, Mass General Law, chapter like sixty-four or whatever, section defines short-term rental. And so we can't, the communities have been trying to take it the other approach and saying, you have to have a twelve-month lease, or you have to do something. And they say, no, that's not what a short-term rental is. A short-term rental is so many consecutive days being rented within a thirty-day period. It's not, you have to have a long-term lease, or you have to have year-round tenants. It's really that definition per Mass General Law. And so, you know, if someone is, if we put that in there as a requirement and someone, you know, has an ADU, they still can rent it. They just can't use it as a short-term rental according to Mass General Law. We don't typically get into that anyways, right? I think the Building Commissioner Inspection Services finds that it's an odd thing to try to start regulating. We have the Rental Registration Program, which is voluntary, but it captures, you know, over a thousand properties or units. And it's been pretty effective. And so the Rental Registration Program, we've had on the books for a few years, manages the rental program pretty well, the rental properties. I think the idea of regulating short-term rental was to discourage, you know, not necessarily the impact of it being rented, but the impact of pricing. So a short-term rental might be priced differently than another type of rental. And I think, I think, I think it was actually the Cape Cod area that pushed to have this in the legislation. I think they were worried about two things. One is short-term rentals that are, you know, ADUs being used for short-term rentals is then not providing, you know, some housing stock. And then it's also creating, it's not helping the price dynamic because short-term rentals can be priced in a way that, say, a longer-term rental isn't. And so, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't think it's a bad thing. We don't do it otherwise in, in the, you know, elsewhere. So other short-term rentals, you know, that are not ADUs are not going to be regulated, but the ADUs could be if we wanted, so.
So our current bylaw, the maximum size of an ADU is a thousand square feet?
So currently, it's a thousand. And then, you know, although it's not in the bylaw, we have to honor the protected use ADU. So that's, you know, nine hundred square feet or.
But if, but if we wanted to not, not cause any of the existing ADUs to become non-conforming, we, a thousand would be the appropriate area for us to make the, a single ADU classification now.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, there's concern that, you know, the difference between nine hundred and a thousand, you could get another occupant. I mean, honestly, I would almost say eleven hundred square feet. What, what we found, we had eight hundred or eight fifty, then, you know, what we found is that originally we allowed it to be bigger for accessibility purposes. So have wider hallways, or, you know, the turning radius in a bathroom to make it visitable. But honestly, what we heard from contractors is that, you know, at nine hundred square feet, and when it was smaller, it's actually difficult to have, sometimes to have a nice design and have comfortable living spaces. At the same time, someone could say, well, that means you'll just have another bedroom. You could have three or four bedrooms. I, you know, to me, whether or not it's nine hundred or a thousand, if someone wants to put four people in an ADU, they're gonna put four people in the ADU, whether it's two bedrooms or three or four, right? They're gonna figure out a way to fit, fit four people. I don't think going from nine hundred to a thousand is gonna cause overcrowding in an ADU. That's my opinion. I think others have a different opinion, but I think the concern, though, Doug, if we did a thousand, like I mentioned, is then all the ADUs that have been permitted that have owner occupancy requirements, that's no longer applicable, so.
Right, okay. All right, so I see Jesse's hand. Go ahead, Jesse, and then Nate, why don't you share your document after that?
Thanks. A couple of questions about the conversation so far. On the short-term rental, what happens if an AD is built? And then the owner moves into that and wants to short-term rent their main property? We don't stop that now, right?
No.
So this would, that, that would just be the ADU, right? Just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
And then, what's the real problem with existing ADUs becoming non-conforming? It's just.
I don't, I don't think there's any problem. I think that they would then, you know, they'd be allowed to add a protected use ADU onto them.
And do we know, like, how many we're talking about in town?
Like I said, there's probably, I don't, you know, we didn't keep great records previously, so, you know, since we've implemented a different permitting system, I have better numbers. But like I said, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's forty accessory dwelling units in town. And maybe, you know, you could say that half of those are now protected use ADUs, given their size, and then half aren't, so.
So maybe there's two dozen that would then be non-conforming, that could build a second one because of, if we eliminated that. Okay, thanks.
And it could be more, it could be thirty, but right, it's not, you know.
Okay.
Fred?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of doing anything that unwinds existing zoning decisions that create an owner occupancy requirement. And so I'd be, I, you know, I, I think the way that we had brought this forward in the Housing Subcommittee is, is appropriate. And yeah, I, I understand that the legislature has largely tied our hands, but to the extent that it hasn't, I think we should do what we think we need to do in general, which we, we can't on the protected use, but knowing full well, there's probably gonna not be a lot of interest in the, that zone between the protected use and the upper limit in our bylaw. But to the extent that it's there, I want to see the regulations that we want to see enforced. I want to see them enforceable.
All right, thank you, Fred. Angus?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I, I, I listened to the CRC's meeting last week, and they seem to be quite freaked out at the idea of two separate ADUs being built, a protected use and a local use. And I agree with you, Fred. I think it would be pretty rare that someone would do that, unless people start to, I, I don't know. But, but the council members seemed really worried about it. And so I think it's, it's highly, it seems highly likely that they're going to push for just one. And so I, I do think it might be worth us thinking through what just one could look like. And what, and what that would mean.
Bruce?
Yes, I, I read this, this thing through twice, and, and you're right, it's very difficult to read because there's so many revisions, and most, much of the revision is simply changing excessively dwelling limit to ADU. So there's a, it's really hard to read and find out what of the yellow text is actually significant. And I don't think I really mastered that. But that, that's just a preamble to why I'm having a little bit of difficulty here. But I guess my question would be, how would we achieve what Jess, what Fred, and I think Jesse are advocating, which is that we, we don't unwind the protection that we have? What is the, what is the proposition that does that? Is it a single ADU at nine hundred? Is it a single ADU at a thousand? Is it something else?
Bruce, are you?
I think I'm asking Nate.
Are you asking Nate, maybe, or?
I think so, yes, because Nate.
Anybody who has an idea about that.
So many hours into this, and that's the problem, because this has been a moving target for, golly, almost ten months now, or certainly nine months.
So Nate?
You, you want my opinion? Yeah, I, I, um.
I want to know how we achieve what Fred said. What's, what do we do? What's the, what's the route to getting Fred's result?
Right, I think, yeah, I mean, I think if you wanted to be simple, you would just allow a protected use ADU at nine hundred square feet, meet the state's definition, and we have, you know, a dozen local requirements, and that's it. And we don't have a local ADU at all. And then the ones that are pre-existing are pre-existing. And so, you know, anyone moving forward would just have the ability to do a protected use ADU, nothing bigger. So, you know, if, for instance, their, their, their principal dwelling isn't very big, they might not get to nine hundred square feet. They're only allowed.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's detail, that's detail. The, the, the question is, so if we have, if we, if we, if we go with a single ADU proposition, nine hundred, and it's the protected ADU size and, and then we create non-conforming ADUs that are more than nine hundred. Is, is that in any way compromise the, the goal that Fred's articulated?
No, I mean, we still, no, we still can keep a local ADU. Like I said, we'd have to make, make it, we'd have to write a conditional approach that, you know, if it were permitted, if it were the, you know, essentially the first ADU, it can be administratively approved, which seems silly that we'd allow administrative approval for a local ADU that's bigger. It has an owner occupancy requirement. But then if the protected use were in place, it'd have to be by special permit.
Hold on with, I thought my question was if we had a single, if we, if we only allowed a, a protected ADU, in other words, I guess the bylaw, I, I, does that mean that there would be no, no mention, there would be nothing in the bylaws in our, in our land use, zoning bylaws about ADUs, because it would simply be what's governed by state law, and we would get rid of everything else, and then we would have this, this, this small raft of non-conforming buildings in backyards?
No, I, we'd still, I would recommend still having a bylaw. So we could take what has been proposed and, you know, whittle it down and get rid of, you know, any, any mention of a local ADU, and you have a page and a half for the protected use ADU. So you still have, you know, the, the purpose applicability, you still have a zoning amendment.
But the amendment is, it's, it's a nine hundred square foot or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, one, we do it that way. And is that, it sounds, Angus, I applaud your diligence in going to the CRC. I thought of doing that, but I didn't have the, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't man enough. Does that sound like what the, the CRC were heading towards in their thinking?
Based on what I heard, yeah. I mean, I think there was some discussion about whether to make it nine hundred or a thousand. I think some of the council members were leaning towards just nine hundred, some were leaning towards a thousand, which would mean essentially no non-conforming ADUs.
But then those, those non-conforming ADUs, as I understand it, would lose their, their prescription on owner occupancy, and that's what Fred's concerned with. And that's why I think putting the ceiling at nine hundred and creating non, 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 kind of willfully creating non-conformity is the way to solve the problem. Am I missing something?
Well, I mean, I guess I, I want to interject. What we're trying, what, what Fred's trying to protect is the thirty or four, say, the, the thirty potential units that have already been built. And everything from this point on would be, would not be owner occupied as a requirement. I mean, if we only have one type. And over time, so, you know, what, is, 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 is that protection on those particular thirty ADUs so important that it's worth the complexity of the bylaw to protect it? Now, I suspect that Jesse's gonna, and Fred would say yes.
But what's the complexity? The only complexity is non-conformity, and that doesn't seem to be a complexity.
Well, it's, it has sounded like it was, it was gonna be more complex than just having a single ADU type that we allowed that was a thousand square feet.
That's why I asked, just made that question, and Nate's answer was that it wasn't.
All right, Nate, am I misinterpreting you?
No, no, I think, I was gonna, oh, I, I think what you said is fine, Doug. I was gonna have Jesse comment, and I was gonna just offer a comment.
Okay, all right, Jesse, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of keeping owner occupancy where we can. I don't think that's a deal breaker for me. I don't think, because it's a relatively low number. However, I would comment that if that goes away, and there are then properties with an ADU and a single house, single family house, the attractiveness for that to be bought and flipped into all rentals is high. More beds, more money. Wherever we land, I would not be in favor of increasing the size of the protected ADU. I do think there's a difference between nine hundred and a thousand square feet in terms of the economics of building one for student rentals. I do agree, if you want to fit four kids in there, you're gonna do it anyway, but I don't see why we would relax that standard. I think at least the discussions in the Subcommittee, you know, have been a lot about, and I'm rehashing just for those of you who weren't part of them, you know, the, the emphasis of this law was to increase housing for families and residents. And in our town, that's not what's gonna happen. And we can argue about it a lot. I feel very confident in the short term, that's not what's gonna happen with any ADUs that get built. They will be student rentals. So that's the position I'm coming from when I think about this.
Okay. All right.
Doug, I just want to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so we still could keep the local ADU, and for those who want to build one, so, you know, we're defining a local ADU as being bigger than a protected use, but not bigger than twelve hundred square feet, or, and we say ninety percent of the habitable space. So, you know, the AG really wants to have some delineation, and it's, we're using the size. So if, for instance, a household wanted to build a local ADU, that would be eleven hundred square feet, there's an owner occupancy requirement on the property, whether it's ADU or whatever, the principal dwelling, and they can do that. They're still then allowed to have a protected use ADU. So they, you know, but they are, but the owner occupancy is still gonna remain on the local ADU. And so when they build the protected use, if they were to do that, the way the state works and the what, you know, the town's attorney said was, well, you can't require owner occupancy of the protected use ADU. But you, you know, in, in their opinion, they can't then try to undermine a previous land use decision or permit that said, well, you know, there's an owner occupancy requirement, and now we're gonna try to negate it just by doing a protected use ADU. So I don't know how many people who want to have a larger ADU with an owner occupancy requirement on the property are then gonna turn around and do a protected use ADU. And vice versa, I don't know why someone who did a protected use ADU first is gonna go through the special permit process to add a local ADU. So we'd have to put it on the books that way. We can't, you know, we have to, would write our bylaw that if it comes second, we'd have a special permit, so it seems kind of like a messy process. It may be used once in a while, but we'd still allow that option of a local ADU with owner occupancy. And I know that some, had there have been some inquiries in town that have, you know, property owners have been following this, and they said they would like a larger ADU. And so they would be willing to have that owner occupancy requirement. You know, there's been ten ADUs in the permit process since this took effect this year. Three, only three are in construction. It's, it's, I think a lot of people thought that they could just apply, not realizing that they needed plans or a survey or. not realizing that they needed plans or a survey or other things. So there have been some homeowners or people who literally just tried to submit a building permit with no information, and they thought, I think they thought they could just, poof, I don't know, have an ADU, not realizing that we saw, the town has a lot of requirements. But to Jesse's point, you know, when I'm looking at those, it seems like most of them will be rentals. You know, some of them are non-owner occupied properties. It, you know, will they be students? I'm not sure, but I think they'll be, you know, it's tough. It's fine that they're rentals, but some of them will be student rentals, knowing who the property owners or applicants were. But I, I don't know how, in the end, how that would, what's the proportion, you know, over a year or two, what that means. But I agree, in Amherst, it's probably likely more student rentals. But we could, we could keep the local and have that option. I just said, you know, it'll be a different kind of bylaw. There's still two, agreed Angus, the CRC was like, wait a minute, that, there is two on the property, but I think in all likelihood, I think there'd be a limited instance where there's gonna be actually two built. I could be wrong.
Okay. Bruce?
I, I think I understand where you're coming from, Nate. You're basically making it possible for somebody to build a slightly larger ADU. I think that's the only benefit that accrues to this. And then you're also saying that although technically that would mean that there could be two, and I guess it also means that if the, the, the local ADU came first, it wouldn't even need to go through a special permitting process before a second one could arrive. So it may not even have the, the, the occupancy requirement on the local ADU that went in a certain order. It seems to me that we don't get much from having that additional possibility, at least much positive. It's a bit, I can see that there is, you know, there's a bit more choice involved and so forth. But it seems that we're opening a door for a fair amount of grief. And, and I think the grief is probably going to come from folks who aren't as sang or aren't as kind of relaxed and clear-headed about it as you are in terms of what the likely outcome is gonna be and so forth. Because I think you're right, it's probably unlikely. But it's not impossible, and, 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 and it seems to me that it's likely to engender a fair amount of commentary that would be, that would confuse the issue. And I don't know that we get, that we get enough positive in order to deal with having to explain the, the complications of having created a bylaw that can get two ADUs on a property and, and maybe even not one of them having an owner occupancy limitation. So I'm not in favor, or at least I'm not yet in favor, I haven't been, I'm not yet persuaded that having, allowing a, a local ADU, uh, having, having a local option is, is, is a, is a, is appropriate or is a good idea.
Okay, so that sounds like a vote to just have a single protected use ADU. Jesse?
Thanks, we're, we're sure this whole section of the bylaw couldn't start with a property can have either a local or a protected ADU. Like the, the, turn, the, the state would say, no, you can't do that. I don't understand that logic.
Nate?
Any property, so, is that, you know, if you're allowed to have an ADU, so it's any, any, um, property where a single family home is allowed in a zoning district can have an ADU. You can't say either or. So you can't say, oh, you're allowed a local but not a protected, you're always allowed a protected.
But if there's already, I'm saying if there's already a local,
Yeah.
that should count as an ADU.
Nope. Nope.
Not a protected use.
Not a protected use ADU. So it's a, it's a, so, right, so it's a specific definition, and, you know, it's now right, a protected use. We say protected use under zoning, so, I mean, the state's made that decision. So, right, so a lot of communities might say, wow, like Amherst, wow, we've allowed ADUs for years, and now, you know, we have a bunch that are not a protected use ADU. Well, those properties get to put another protected use ADU, and we can't say no.
You good, Jesse?
Yep.
Fred?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to reopen. Bruce made a, a very intriguing suggestion that I, I think we should come back to, and I, I think, I think I'm now persuaded to just go with the protected use ADU and have the others that have been permitted over the years that are above the nine hundred foot limit simply become non-conforming. And I, I never thought I would be in favor of this concept in anything. I, those of you that have served with me on the planning board before, one of the things that I always look for is avoiding the creation of non-conformities. But I think in this case, given the nonsense presented to us by the state legislature, this may be the lesser of evils. And so if we went with this, then the existing ones that are out there would continue. And thereafter, you would never build an ADU that was larger than nine hundred square feet. And I'm not real happy about that, but the legislature is forcing us to do stupid things because the legislature did a stupid thing. And I, you know, I can get my head around this. So, yeah, I've, I've kind of come to a different position on this.
All right, thank you, Fred. I'm gonna call on Pam Rooney, she has her hand up, and obviously she's a counselor and on the CRC. Pam, if you could bring her over. She has her hand up.
Thank you, Pam.
Welcome, Pam.
Thank you, Pam Rooney, forty-two Cottage Street.
Are, are you speaking as a citizen or as a council member?
I think as a citizen, somebody who's interested in the deliberation tonight. It may or may not affect what I think about next week. My, my question is really, in this discussion about local versus protected ADUs, I want to hear from Nate. If we keep local ADUs, if we keep, uh, as, as we move into creating protected use ADUs, that's great. They're nine hundred square feet, blah, blah, blah. The, the existing ADUs that may or may not be conforming, I have the very specific question. If there is a, an ADU that does not meet the criteria of the state, does that local, I'll call it local, ADU maintain all of its existing conditions, including the cap on four unrelated occupants and the requirement for owner occupancy? That's, that's really my big question.
All right, thank you, Nate?
It, it does, so however, you know, that was permitted in terms of conditions or what regulations were in place remain. So, you know, if you, right, if you, if there is, you know, we'll call it the local ADU that's already been permitted, and even if it's not nine hundred square feet, right, but it's bigger than the formula for calculating protected use, that remains, you know, it'll, we'll call it a pre-existing non-conforming ADU, and any conditions associated with that remain.
All right. Thank you, Pam, I guess. I, okay, Jesse and then Angus.
So that seems to solve the, the problem that Fred and I were struggling with, right? If they're non-conforming, they still have to be owner occupied, they still have a person limit. So then to me, there's no reason to keep it.
Okay. All right, Angus.
But just to clarify, those houses with that pre-existing now non-conforming ADU could then also build an additional local, protective use ADU?
They could, and just to clarify, although you can't require owner occupancy of a protected use, it doesn't wipe out the previous conditions on the permit. So the protected use ADU couldn't be owner occupied, and maybe you could argue that the principal dwelling couldn't, but that pre-existing non-conforming ADU has to be owner occupied. So at least, you know, one unit on the property has to be owner occupied if that was a condition of the pre-existing non-conforming ADU.
Okay. All right, so Nate, you haven't brought up your draft yet, and I know Bruce said it was confusing and difficult to read. It seems like we are at a point where we are likely to ask you to heavily edit it to just, um, just comply with the protected use ADU.
So yeah, so I, I've done that, and unfortunately, I didn't share it. I have three, I have a few other versions I was working on, just in case of scenarios. Just to make it easier, it still has a lot of, might have a lot of highlights and things that are questionable, but I, I did draft that, and so.
Why don't, why don't we take our break before we, we go dive into your draft and get, you know, down in the weeds of that? So I'm seeing the time is eight seventeen. Fred, I'll call on you if you want me to. Fred?
I was just gonna ask if, Nate, if you could put that on the website, then I could print it out when I come back from break.
Yeah, you know, I'll just forward it to the board right now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, so eight seventeen, five minutes from now, I guess is eight twenty-two, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three. Please come back and turn on your camera at least to let me know you're back from our break. Pam, we can't hear you.
You can?
Yeah.
You can hear me humming?
Absolutely.
I hum at work, too. Yeah, it's, it's been noted.
Not a problem, just wanted you to know.
Thank you.
A lot better than my whistling, which drives my wife absolutely nuts.
I've been working on whistling. I used to be able to just do the normal whistling, but there's that kind that people can do with like, like you can't, now they're gonna do it, no, like, not having to do that.
Yeah.
You know, like, all of a sudden, you're at the dog park and somebody goes.
Yeah.
And so I even looked up to try to learn how to do that, like, it's this whole thing. But when I get that perfected, just kind of like Jesse with his piano, I'll, 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 I'll share.
Maybe we'll have planning board music night.
Yeah.
I will just listen.
You can do a pogo stick or something, Doug.
I'll play the spoons, right?
Oh, yeah.
Pretty, pretty low skill there.
If I may, while we're waiting for.
Oh, well, Fred's back, so we can, we can resume. Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, I, it's just the, the, the mention about having a planning board singing night reminded me of something that I was thinking. Over the last couple of years, you've had invited people toward the end of the summer over to your place. And I was thinking that maybe this year I would invite a similar event hosted at my place, which is pretty spacious out in the seven acres we have. So that might be a topic. I don't know, can that be put on to the night's agenda or should I just send an email out?
Well, let's see how this evening's conversation goes and how late it is when we're ready to entertain additional things. You know, that would be essentially a social event. Just for the record, without any conversation about matters before us, so it's.
Just the way we behaved at your place.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, I think you could just pick a night and send us all an email.
Okay.
You know, you might wanna consult Nate or.
And my wife.
Somebody else, yeah, about when would be a good night for, to get the most yield, so to speak.
And it would be a family thing, you know. We'd want to probably be in September, weather's warm and the kids can come and everybody can be in or out, without and that sort of thing. So that's what I'll do. No need to discuss it any further, I'll just.
Well, we'll wait for your email.
And I second Bruce's proposal for a party.
Yeah, it's been nice in the last couple of times when we did that. It's nice just to see people in person and see how tall they are.
It is, especially if it's Pam.
I'll try to perfect my whistling by then.
Oh, yes, that's true. Jesse, can you bring your piano?
Yeah. All right, so Tam is eight twenty-seven and we can resume our actual deliberative discussion. Continuing with the ADU bylaw. Has anybody had any further comments or further thoughts while they were on break? All right, why don't I ask, oh, Jesse, go ahead.
Just one. An hour later, at some point, we had I thought added language about the four unrelated. And that's now no longer here. Did I miss that conversation?
Nate, I don't know what you think. I don't think we ever really discussed that. That's in a different part of the town bylaws, I believe. It's not even.
I know at some, at some version of the ADU discussion, we had included it. But I don't, and I don't see it. If that was a decision, I'm just wondering what happened, because I would certainly be in favor of that.
I think it was in the subcommittee.
Oh, sorry. Previously, we had said, well, it's mentioned elsewhere in the bylaw, we'll rely on that. I think also the AG's office would say having any type of occupancy restriction is an unreasonable regulation. And so they might say that having four unrelated is unreasonable.
But it would still apply because of our rental registration? Or not?
It's debatable.
Okay.
How many people can you cram in nine hundred square feet, huh?
Well, you know, it's the plumbing code is the, has the strictest square foot allowance. Or the, or the least amount, I guess, so. You know, I don't know if it's like six and nine hundred or whatever it is. It's an odd thing. But you know, you know, if you're on septic, it's also how's your septic design in terms of number of bedrooms it can handle. So there's other factors. Emeritus is mostly water and sewers, so we don't have that issue. But yeah, I think the foreign related is, would, other bylaws have tried it and the AG has denied it. So I think it would be, I don't see why we would put it in there. The rental registration is a general bylaw, it's not a zoning bylaw, so I think that it's more appropriate there and could, you know, we could argue that it could be enforced because it's not zoning.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, so Nate, do you wanna share the version that was just a single ADU, single local protected ADU?
So it's, if this is visible, it's dated August fifteenth. And you know, I can go through, there were the highlighted versions previously in the document discussed by CRC. So one was, there had been a statement here at the end of this saying that an ADU can enable a property owner to age in place or earn supplemental income. And the question was, do we need this? And, you know, the model bylaw from the state had it. I agree, it wasn't comprehensive. I removed it. We could put something back. I mean, I don't know if it's necessary. So in this version anyways, I removed that statement.
Personally, I don't think it's necessary.
All right, under applicability. So you know, this has been modified, the town permits one type of accessory dwelling unit, a protected use ADU in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section three and seven sixty CMR. You know, this language was added, single-family residential zoning district. That's how the state defines it. And so it's just a clarification. You know, essentially any single-family residential zoning district that allows a detached, single-family dwelling by right or by special permit, including the ROR, the RN, RVC and RG zoning district. So.
Let me ask you one thing and then I'll call on Bruce. Nate, I thought in an earlier meeting about this, you had said that if there was a little apartment building on a site that an ADU could be allowed, or would be required to be allowed there. So do we have any zones that would require, would allow some other type of housing other than single-family that where the ADU would be required?
Yeah, I think the confusing thing is the state calls it a single-family residential zoning district.
It's not a district that only allows single-family houses.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
All right. So this makes sense from the sort of legal context.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so it's not saying that you can only have ADUs on single-family homes. It's saying that ADUs are allowed in any, essentially in any zoning district that allows a detached, single-family dwelling. So, you know, we allow single-family dwellings in just those zoning districts, only in our residential zoning districts. The attorney, our town attorney, recommended putting in the single-family residential phrase because that's part of the rules, state rules and regulations.
Okay.
You know, some communities that don't have many zoning districts, they might have, say, just a residential and commercial, you know, agricultural zones, they allow residential units in their commercial district. So now they have to allow ADUs in their commercial district.
Bruce, did we answer your question?
You asked my question and it was fully enough answered.
Okay, all right, thanks. Go ahead, Nate.
Sure. You know, I think there had been some discussion about having, and we can modify this, you know, consistency of how we spell out Mass General Law and the sections, that's a minor thing, but you know, it's recommended that when we define it, you know, we include the references to state law and the CMR, the mass regulation. So, you know, the definition, you know, what we say here, applicability. You know, an ADU shall meet the definition per Mass General Law as well as the regulation. And then this is something that you know, just defines it, the land, the use of land or structure for protected use shall be as of right, requiring only a building permit. So none, this really hasn't changed. And then an ADU may be completely contained within a dwelling or detached to it or separate. Again, that was in there, that hasn't really changed. So definitions. These are, you know, there was a question from the CRC, do we have them in this section of the bylaw or do we have them in Article twelve of the zoning bylaw? I think it's fine having them here. Because in this instance, a principal dwelling to me is really only as it relates to the protected ADU. We define principal dwellings differently, so in accordance with the state regulation, a principal dwelling shall mean a structure regardless of whether or not, you know, it or the lot is conforms to zoning and contains at least one dwelling unit. And is or will be located on the same lot as an ADU. So essentially, that's where Doug, the apartment building, townhouses, whatever in our zoning districts is considered a principal dwelling. Typically in our zoning bylaw, when we say principal dwelling, we refer to a single-family dwelling. And I think when the state first came out with these, the legislation, everyone was thinking, oh, a principal dwelling is a single-family dwelling. But then they clarified it in the rules that know it's a structure. So the principal dwelling is a structure that has at least one dwelling unit. So any type of dwelling unit.
So would it be useful or helpful for to introduce this, you know, after the words principal dwelling to say something like for the purposes of Article five only?
Can I, we say it up here?
Oh, you do, okay.
For the purpose of this section of the zoning bylaw.
Fine, yep, never mind. Go ahead.
If I could just interject, everywhere else in the bylaw, I think we use the term principal residence, not principal dwelling. I didn't find any principal dwellings, I did a quick search.
Okay.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, semantics, right, I agree, that's different. I think it would be confusing though if we define principal dwelling in our bylaw. I mean, I guess it's a decision if you wanna put these definitions in Article twelve or five, I'm comfortable keeping them in Article five.
Well, at least this first one, since it really only applies to this article, I think that makes sense.
And then the protected ADU. Nothing's really changed here in terms of how it's defined. I did slip in the thousand square feet, so I guess we would reject this and go back to what we had had previously.
The nine hundred.
Right. That's funny, where did that go? I'll work on that.
And that is nine hundred square feet of habitable space. So you could end up with the gross footprint being greater than a hundred, nine hundred square feet.
So we said, what we had said was, you know, instead of saying gross square feet, we say, you know, half the floor area of the habitable space or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, so.
Bruce?
Seems like we should also therefore have to define habitable space. I mean, does it include an entry? Does it include a closet? Does it include? I mean, am I gonna start getting fast and loose and clever, you know, being a smart architect? And start trying to, you know, figure out what habitable space is and drive that number down, which I might do.
Habitable space is a defined term in the bylaw already.
Oh, it is? Okay, good.
And it, and it was aligned with how building code defines habitable space. So in essence, you are getting, you know, a larger unit doesn't include, you know, the utility closet if it's for, you know, a water heater.
That's okay, if it's already defined, Nate, I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar as I should be.
So let's see. Okay, I'm just going through the comments I sent you in the highlighted version from the CRC. I think it's easier once we, once we you know, once we only have the one ADU. Now for the general requirements, you know, there was a question of inserting the short-term rental idea. So that's not, you know, that isn't here yet.
Angus?
Sorry, I just had a question about the protected use definition.
Yep.
You cut out the one-half floor area of the principal dwelling. Is that not part of the state definition?
Oh, it's here now, it's not larger in floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the old version, sorry.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just put it back. General requirements, you know, an ADU shall be located on the same lot as the principal dwelling. There shall be no more than one protected use ADU permanent on the same lot in accordance with the CMR. So that's, the state says that, you know, really you're only allowed one protected use ADU. There's no minimum lot size required and there's no additional lot area required. So that's that hasn't changed. The more permissive dimensional regulations for a detached, single-family dwelling, principal dwelling or an accessory structure shall apply to the ADU. And by that, you know, it's whatever's the most flexible. So, you know, whatever has the greatest amount of lot coverage, whatever would have the smallest setback. You know, I think the building commissioner asked what is exactly meant by permissive. It's, it's a term they use in the state regulations. If we think it's somewhat confusing, we could change it. So essentially, you know, if in our, in most of our zoning districts, we only have a ten-foot setback to an accessory structure or a height equal, the setback is equal to its height. And for a detached, single-family dwelling, we might have twenty feet. For an accessory structure, we have ten feet. So an ADU is allowed to be ten feet from the side of your property line. And then in that zoning district, for instance, we have the height requirement, the more permissive height requirement between an accessory structure or a single-family dwelling allows, is applied. So we can use the setback for an accessory structure, but because our principal dwelling or our single-family dwelling can be two and a half floors, the accessory dwelling unit is allowed to be two and a half floors. So, you know, it's a combination of dimensional standards applies to the ADU.
I could imagine, if Rob didn't like permissive, what about any of the dimensional regulations?
No, the state's been clear, they'll say in the regulations, it's the more permissive of the regulations, so.
All right.
You know, do we say flexible or, you know, generous, you know, whatever. To me, this is I understand it, I don't know if it's not clear to other folks, just like, you know, I think it's important to say it and, you know, for instance, in two years from now, someone's reading this, like, what does it really mean?
Least restrictive?
Right.
I mean, you could say the more permissive comma, i.e. least restrictive and say it two ways. I don't know, I'm not saying you really need to do that, but.
Yeah, you know, I'll just put that. You know, we had this curb cut, so we had said, if feasible, we just clarified, there should be no additional or separate driveway curb cut unless allowed by the Department of Public Works. So we, you know, just clarified that statement a little bit.
So this reads that you cannot have another curb cut.
Unless allowed by the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Which they typically do anyways.
All right.
But I think, to me, it's important to have this, there actually is an ADU that was proposed in town and the owner went and put down a gravel pad, essentially putting, creating a second driveway, not realizing they needed to get approval. And so then, you know, something like I was telling the CRC, you know, I look at the zoning bylaw as, you know, an educational tool as, you know, for the staff as well as applicants and homeowners. So you know, we could say that a lot of this isn't necessary if it's repeating state law, but usually we try to simplify it into terms and language that is understandable. So, you know, to me, this would be important to have in there just as another mechanism to alert, you know, staff and an applicant that they need to contact Public Works.
Would it be even more clear to say no additional or separate driveway curb cut to serve the ADU shall be permitted?
Well, I think having, unless allowed by Public Works.
Yeah, unless, unless allowed. Okay.
Right, just changing this.
Yeah, the there shall be, I don't know. That's, that's just a little soft. Brad, I see your hand.
Yeah, I have a question about the DPW. Back under the previous charter, additional curb cuts went to the select board. And is this now just the DPW and not the council? I'm just asking, I'm not sure.
I'll look into that, that's my understanding.
All right, well, good point, Fred.
Let's see, what else? So there was, you know, we have a parking plan. And there was a question asked at the CRC, you know, would the residential property, rental property bylaw cover this? And it doesn't necessarily. So you know, the staff thinks having these requirements in here, you know, is important in addition to the rental property. So if someone is renting a property, they have to provide a parking management plan. It doesn't allow conditions on it. And so this is saying is that a parking plan should be submitted that meets the landscape, design and landscape standards for the zoning bylaw. So it's a little, little more prescriptive than just submitting a parking plan. I think it was also asked, you know, do we require this of single-family homes by the CRC? And would it be an unreasonable regulation? And I would say it's not unreasonable because it doesn't nullify or prohibit the use of the ADU or construction of the ADU. It's actually talking about the parking for it. And I think we could argue that it actually meets, you know, a clear objective, it's, you know, meets a municipal purpose to have standards for a parking area. So I would be comfortable saying that this is, although not applied to a single-family, you know, the state's restrictions are. you know, the state's, uh, restrictions are you can't apply something to A D Us that aren't applied to single-family homes in terms of, say, zoning, unless it meets three criteria to be reasonable. And I would say that this is a reasonable request right here.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
Others, you know.
Fine until we're, until it's struck down.
Yep. Um, if the principal dwelling or A D U will be rented, you have to follow the residential property by law. That's been in there. Exterior lighting shall be downcast, you know, onsite storage shall be, a a waste management shall be, um, you know, within an attached garage or accessory building or screened. Again, you have to provide a management plan if you have a rental property, but it doesn't get into the specifics of having it be screened or how it shall be contained. Again, kind of like the parking plan, I would say that this is a reasonable regulation, although not applied to single-family dwellings.
Can I, uh, suggest that the word occur be replaced with be located?
Yep. You know, we have that, we've had, always had this. So most of this is, you know, has been existing language. It's been reformatted just now, applying to the protected use A D U. You know, no more than three parking spaces. And it was recommended that we added this next sentence or s- or phrase that according to the regulation, no additional parking space shall be required for an A D U located within half a mile of a commuter rail station or bus station. And so, you know, some communities are trying to insert some language saying that you have to have at least one parking space for an A D U. And the A G has been coming back and saying, you don't actually, you can't require that if it's with within a half mile. And 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 how they define a bus station, you know, the P V T A bus stops are considered a bus station. And if the rail service came back to, um, uh, the depot, that'd be considered a commuter rail station. So anything within a half mile of a P P V T A bus stop, or if we had a rail stop, you are, you cannot be required to, um, acquire one, a parking space for that A D U.
So I see, I see two hands and, um, I'll go ahead, Fred, and then Bruce, and then if neither of you ask my question, I'll ask it.
Uh, Nate, uh, I have a quibble with the word per. Per.
Oh, yeah.
Is a is a preposition. It means for each. And, uh, per that use is is kind of a slang use, it should say, in accordance with.
All right.
It's a very small.
No, it's fine. I, after I wrote it and I sent it, I I kind of thought, thought the same thing.
All right. Uh, thanks, Fred. Bruce?
Well done, Fred. Um, I'm wondering again, on the definition side, uh, I was wondering whether bus station uh, needs to be defined. It's, because I would have thought that this doesn't apply to us because we don't have a rail station or a bus station. They're not likely to have one in town. Um, a commuter one. And, uh, but you say that bus station actually means bus stop, and I think, uh, that really either should say bus stop or uh, s- somehow clarifica- clarify bus station. And is there a reason why we shouldn't be concerned that just putting the language from the bylaw in is, it seems to me that's going to cause confusion?
Yeah, we we could throw a definition in there. The, um, in the regulation, they say a bus station, excuse me, or commuter rail station is a point of, um, you know, um, um, getting on or off.
Embarkation?
Yeah, or something, uh, and they have some other phrase. And then, so that's, it's a really, it's kind of a broad term. And so the way the A G has been interpreting that is saying, yes, any, essentially, any bus route or formalized bus route that has a bus stop is a bus station. So I agree, when this first language first came out, everyone was saying, well, uh, the way it was worded is that, you know, only something on like a Peter Pan or Major bus route is a bus station, right? It's not these little local bus stops. And a commuter rail station is really like North Station. It's not, you know, anything else, but the interpretation of the A G's office has been different. So.
So I would suggest that we get rid of rail station or bus station and simply put, uh, a a bus stop. Because that's what we mean.
That this is in the regulation. So I think if we were going to do anything, I think we would add a definition to it.
Well.
Could you just?
Why? It's, but but we were talking about what's reasonable before with regard to parking plans and management plans and and wouldn't, uh, saying a bus stop be reasonable in the same context? I mean, we don't have to state the, uh, regulation. We just have to conform to it.
Well, would we, if this language is exactly what's in the legislation, could we put it in quotes and then some, a comma that says something like.
Bus stop. Something like that is seems to me to be important.
Commonly known as a bus stop in in common parlance or something.
Well, yeah, so as you say, put it in quotation marks and then say, uh, and for the purposes of our bylaw, uh, 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 a bus, a bus stop.
As, uh, stated in some, you know, opinion number three thousand from the Attorney General, a bus station includes local bus stops.
It seems a a a heavy-handed way of saying what we want to say. And then, and unless we're going to have a uh, the the A G, uh, come down on us, uh, I would just say, put in bus stop and see what happens. Because that's, I mean, that's what people are going to uh, understand. And and I suppose, okay, that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put the stop there for now, just.
That, that's, that goes a long way there, I think. Thank you, Nate. That gets it for me.
So Nate, um, I'll ask my question now, and I do see Angus's hand. Um, if we're able to limit the number of parking spaces at these A D Us, could we say two? Um, you know, if we're worried about these being rental units and packing students into them, could we, could we be more restrictive?
We could, we could. I think, you know, the difficulty will be in determining, you know, is the, uh, well, it might not be difficult. On some properties, it might be difficult to determine, is the parking serving only the A D U, or is it also serving, you know, the principal dwelling or other units on the property? Uh, you know, parking space is not the same as, say, the drive aisle or other things. So you know, I think.
If it's hard, if it's hard to actually distinguish, I don't know. Okay, I I mean, I don't, I don't feel strongly about it. And I, you know, so I I just was curious.
We could, we could say two. I mean, to me, the, if we say three onsite parking spaces, that's, you know, someone has created, right, really a parking area, right, it's off their driveway or off a drive aisle where cars are parking. Uh, we could say two. I just.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not going to advocate strongly for it. So Angus.
Well, yeah, I guess continuing the parking discussion, I'm just trying to understand what would be the appropriate number of spaces um, in terms of a parking plan that the building commissioner would approve?
Right. So, you know, the bylaw had at one point said two spaces per unit. Now it has something different in terms of what's the right approach. So you know, I think they would look at, you know, how many bedrooms, maybe what the lease agreements are, and then just what, and it and it actually asks in the application form, how many parking spots are you providing? And so then they just want to see that they're actually in the right location. So our bylaw says you can have no more than two spaces within the front setback. And so, you know, if you have a double-wide driveway and it's, say, eighty feet long, and you're willing to say, all my tenants are going to stack their cars, that's fine. And then that's the plan. So then if, you know, people start parking on the lawn and there's a complaint, the town can enforce it and say, no, the way you're supposed to park your cars is they're supposed to be stacked in the driveway. And so the purpose of the plan isn't to say, you know, is it the right number of parking spaces? It's to say, this is the way the cars are going to be parked, and we can enforce that if there's a complaint, really. Uh, and you know, and so it might be that if someone says, oh, I want twelve parking spaces for five bedrooms, maybe the inspector will say, that seems a little odd. You know, are you exceeding your lot coverage or dimensional standards? Uh, but if, you know, if they're proposing something like that, and it seems like an anomaly, and it meets all other parts of the bylaw, that could be allowed. And so, you know, this was, the Housing Subcommittee discussed this. So, you know, we have a maximum, but we also have, we wanted to, the recommendation was to also put in this about, you know, within a bus stop location, because, you know, like I said, a number of communities actually require A D Us to provide parking. And we're taking, we're, we were trying to take the approach of saying, we we just have, we just don't want a maximum number. The concern would be that you'd have a lot of payment for, um, an A D U, so.
Okay, uh, Bruce?
Um, I think I'm actually going to advocate that we keep it at the three. Um, because Nate says there's other ways of providing for greater parking, and it's not really that convenient. Uh, I'm reminded, actually, I think it was a a planning board, uh, uh, application that we had. It was either that or a, or a uh, local historic district commission. Um, actually, I think it must have been the planning board, uh, on Spalding Street, right at the end of Spalding Street. We had a, an applicant, uh, who, um, there was disputes with neighbors involved, so it got a little bit kind of, uh, distracted. But I think essentially, this, uh, um, applicant was actually trying to put some intelligent parking in because they had this kind of stacked arrangement. And I remember thinking at the time that this was a better idea for the, uh, the 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 housing condition that they had, which included essentially an A D U. So it seems to me that the Spalding Street experience tells me that we shouldn't, uh, squeeze that, uh, maximum number down, uh, that that, that actually three is probably a good number.
That's fine.
All right. Um, so then, you know, we have, you know, to the extent feasible, a newly constructed detached A D U shall be located behind the front building line of the principal dwelling closest to the street. You know, staff thinks this is reasonable. Um, you know, I it it's really qualified by that to the extent feasible. So there may be instances where it isn't. But otherwise, you know, we would encourage something that's not necessarily, you know, in the middle of the front yard. Uh, M, you know, there's been some discussion, I think, by the planning board and even staff. And so, you know, uh, about removing this. So I, you know, I, I, you know, we talked about this last time. Um, so I'm, either way, we think that M is not necessary. It could be removed.
Well, I know I was the advocate for for allowing a front entrance on a A D U, and I have not changed my opinion, but I'm not going to belabor it. Jara?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so Nate, when we say to the extent feasible, like this is an administrative approval, right? So that that judgment of what is feasible would be made by the planning staff. Is that right?
Right. And so it would be, right. Or, you know, the building commissioner or building or the inspectors. You know, and this would be, you know, if if a lot is, you know, generous in terms of its size, and they have an A D U, and they decide to put it really close to the property line, and then they're like, oh, and by the way, here's where I want to put the stairs. Staff would say, well, jeez, you have all this space around the A D U. Couldn't you configure it differently?
Right.
But then some lots might not have, right, the frontage or the width or the shape to allow it. You know, I think in the previous discussions, there were some saying, well, you know, is it, does it conflict with the provision above? And is it, you know, doesn't really do anything? And like Doug said, you know, won't someone design something that works? And so do we really need to start getting into, you know, how the stairs and entrances work? I, so I'm, I, you know, I, I could go either way on this, actually. I'm not.
I would, uh.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jara.
Sorry, I was just going to say to, um, normally, I, or under, I I would, I would maybe even suggest striking L and M, but considering it is a staff-level administrative discretion, I'd be okay, though I would still prefer that we maybe take out M. It feels a little bit like we're treating A D U residents as second-class citizens or something, trying to hide their entrance from the front. Um, and I I hate to open up this can of worms at nine o'clock, but I, I I do like Fred and Bruce's idea of having a local A D U that has an owner occupancy requirement that allows for larger structures. Um, and again, I'm sorry for opening up this can of worms again, but I've just been thinking about it more. And I certainly understand the concern about two A D Us being on a property, the concern about, um, and the silliness of needing to go through a special permitting process for a protected, um, A D U, a protected use A D U. But I worry that our fear of the spec- the silliness of the special permitting process and the fear of these potential two units on a property, which we, it sounds like most of us feel is probably unlikely to happen, that the fear of those two things are preventing us from achieving the goals of increasing the housing supply in Amherst by providing protected use, which presumably would be for, you know, renters. Um, my ideal scenario, and call me naive, of course, is that I love this idea of the owner occupancy requirement for a larger twelve-hundred-square-foot uh, A D U, because that's more the housing type that I see when I think about intergenerational housing. Or if you have a kid with special needs and needs to live with you, but maybe you want to have a separate residence. So I absolutely hear you, Jesse, on your concern that, like, you add more square footage, you're just going to get more students. But I wonder if there still is a way for us to find this medium where we're allowing for the protected use, but we're also allowing for these larger owner-occupied ones that can perhaps help unlock the housing supply for other homes that are currently, um, stuck in the housing filtration process. Is there any way that the staff could do like a rough back-of-the-napkin assessment of like how many properties could feasibly fit two of these A D Us? Um, you know, and again, with the special permitting process, the nine hundred square feet one, if that has to go before a special permitting process, I think we'd probably likely agree that it would make sense and would be permitted. If we feel like the second A D U is problematic, we'll reject it. So I I feel like the the fact that a second A D U would have to go through a special permitting process is a really good barrier against excessive A D U development, especially if, and correct me if I'm wrong, especially if they need five out of seven of our, um, votes to get that approval. And so I guess I'm proposing opening up the the idea of having a second, a local A D U with an owner occupancy requirement that is larger. I guess I don't know how that necessarily affects the the thousand-foot uh, existing A D Us and their nonconformity, but I I worry that our fear of what could happen with this A D U bylaw is significantly impacting the positive impacts that it it also could have. And so I'd be curious to hear what others think about that.
Yeah, quickly, if I may, just, I want to just clarify that.
Yeah.
A protected use A D U would always be by, um, a building permit. So if that were to come second, it wouldn't need a, um, a special permit. So.
Okay.
You know, it only, the only time a special permit would be needed is if someone built a protected use first and then came with a local A D U after.
Okay.
So, you know, the scenario, to me, allowing a local A D U, right, if someone is like, oh, I really want a bigger A D U, they'll choose a local A D U with the own, and but they would, it would be required to be owner-occupied, you know.
Right.
And then if, for instance, they decided two years later to do a protected use A D U, they could. And that owner occupancy requirement of the local A D U isn't removed. But the protected use, you know,
Right.
have, you know, can't have that restriction. So, you know, you're still have an owner-occupied unit on the property, uh, you, but you're allowing two additional units on that property.
Right, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, so Jara has proposed we reopen the conversation about the second A D U, the local A D U. about the second ADU, the local ADU. Fred, your hand was up before. Go ahead and make your comment and maybe I'll look for anybody who wants to endorse Jara's request and see how much support there is for that.
Yeah, I, I think it is an unnecessary complication. Remember that quite frequently, if you're thinking about a second ADU, you might also, in, in probably most cases, would qualify for a second dwelling unit under a normal special permit proceeding anyway. So it seems to me like that's an unnecessary complication to go back to this. I would oppose that.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Anybody else? Jesse?
Sure, I'm not opposed at all. I was reading the room before and sort of thought it wasn't interesting that. I think it's fine. It does complicate things a little bit, but I don't, I don't really think that's a problem. And I don't think it will be very much used at all, to be honest, but.
All right, I guess I will say I'm, I'm not opposed. You know, I'm, I, I'm I, I guess we would probably need to continue the, the meeting, the hearing and kind of regroup. Do you agree, Nate?
I would say Doug, that Angus and Bruce have had their hands up.
Oh, really? Have I, oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. I had my Zoom lineup moved over to the right. Bruce?
Actually Angus is before me.
Okay, Angus.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, I, I think I, one of the things that I like about the idea, I, my, my goal is to simplify the zoning bylaws wherever we can. So I, I'm, I'm with Fred in that I like the idea of just keeping it simple. But I think a couple of things have been said tonight that make, made me kind of rethink things. One, hearing from Nate, that if someone had a local use and then decided to do a protected use, they would still ha, it would still have to be owner occupied. That, that's changed kind of my perception of things a little bit. That that in order to, to, to still, you know, own the property, they would, they would, they would have to be owner occupied. So that's, that, that's changed my mind a little bit. And then I think the other thing that I'm hearing that I, I really like about what the Housing Subcommittee did with the initial proposal is there, there was a, a sense that some families do want a bigger unit for a variety of purposes, for extended family, wha, what have you. And so this idea of having the owner occupied local use, 1,200 square foot option is really great for current residents, future residents who are, who own their houses. And then this local, this protected use would likely be a lot of rentals, right, to, to Jesse's point. But I, I, I like this idea of trying to figure out how to balance both. Yes, we have student rentals that are gonna get, that are driving a lot of, you know, concerns about housing in this town, but figuring out some way to still prioritize current residents who own and occupy their homes to give them options. I, I like having, giving them more options. And that's, that's what the Housing Subcommittee seemed to be trying to do. So un, understanding a little bit more about how the requirement of owner occupancy would work if someone were to then build a second ADU helps, helps me understand things a little bit better. And I, and I liked Jara's idea now, now that I understand that more.
Okay, thanks Angus. Bruce?
So that means that the, if we add the opportunity for a local ADU, that would mean that we would be keeping the, the, those existing ADUs which have been achieved by special permit that are larger than 900. They would be back in the conforming column, I guess. Which I guess is okay. There was no downside to that particularly. It's just that there was no particular downside with them being non-conforming either. So to be clear, I was, wasn't advocating two. I was actually advocating the opposite, that we should have one. But, and I was advocating that because I just thought it was likely to be misconstrued. And perhaps I was just wanting to try and avoid what I thought might be a, a bit of a train wreck. But, but I, as I said earlier, I think I agree that it's unlikely to be widely executed. And if it is, it, it does contain the, the owner occupancy. So I guess I didn't feel strongly one way or the other. But what I have my hand up for, I'm sorry, is to say I agree with Doug and with Jara that number M is I, I think that's, doesn't, doesn't rise to the price of admission.
All right.
Thanks, Bruce. That, that helped me delete it.
Put us over the top.
Yeah, I, you know, I, you know, when you're talking about the owner occupancy piece, it reminded me that in discussing this with staff, the, you know, a property owner could put a covenant on their property. So it's not zoning, right? It's a, it's a private matter. So even if they build a protected use ADU, they could put a covenant on their property that one of the units needs to be owner occupied, right? It's, it's, it's a, something that they do on their own. It's outside of zoning in any town purview. It then becomes a legal issue between, you know, a potential new owner. But that's a possibility. I don't, you know.
Why, why would anyone do that?
Well, so say so, say we only do the one protected use ADU, but there is a family or, you know, the property owner wants the, wants one of the units on the property owner occupied. They, they could put, they could themselves write in, you know, a covenant on the property to do that. And so, because they want to, right? Because they, you know, that's, you know, it's, again, it's not a zoning matter. We wouldn't, the town might not even know about it. You know, it becomes a legal issue when something happens with the property, but the difference being if it was a local ADU, you know, and, you know, it's in the bylaw, you know, there is some town control over it. And it goes through some kind of, you know, building and, you know, administrative review process. But I think the option, I was mentioning, I'm just saying, I just want to put it out there that, you know, there are some properties that have covenants on them that have nothing to do with the town or zoning. I think it would be odd, but it, you know.
Okay. So Nate, you know, given the hour, it seems like it would be worth us continuing and coming back to review a draft that has the the, the second option with the local ADU. Do you?
I think.
Or do, do you think we can get through the alternative fairly expeditiously? And I do see two hands so far.
Yeah. Yeah, take those comments. I, you know, we put the definition back in there for a local ADU. And then we have the requirements specific to a local ADU, which we had seen before, saying like owner occupancy, some design standards.
Do you think it could be fairly expeditious?
Yeah, and we had previously had like four or five conditions for the local ADU, and I might really only suggest two of those, or maybe three. And then.
All right, well, let's get those, I'll take those two comments and you can.
I'll work on a document.
Fred, why don't you go? Whoops, you were, you're now muted.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Nate, I, I understand putting a covenant on a, on a property. But without the force of the zoning bylaw, I'm not an attorney, but seems to me that a subsequent owner could decide to remove the covenant. So I think, I, I kind of think that is irrelevant unless someone can persuade me that my understanding of the law is incorrect.
Okay. Jesse?
I was just gonna comment that I think where this started, moving to local, was maybe mostly in response to, I think Angus' comment about being at CRC and listening to the councilors. And I get that and I expect that. I also would like to think as the planning board, if we don't, if we say something different and justify it, that that would hold some weight. So I'd be happy to work on that justification with you, Nate, and the rest of you about why we think this is the way to go.
So Nate, do you think you've got the material we could use to? Are you frantically cutting and pasting? Maybe we'll take another five-minute break.
I was, I think I have it. I'll share my screen. Let me just figure out which version.
You mean, we can't just vote on a recommendation to council that we endorse whatever it is you come up with?
Do we do committee reports or something while he's doing this?
Yeah, I, you know, so I, you know, there'd be, we'd have to modify the applicability here a little bit, you know, two types of ADUs. I think the, 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 what we had done before was we just referenced what they were. So a local ADU, in terms of how it would be approved, we say administrative approval. Was highlighted in yellow is we'd have to clarify and say that if it were a second, the second ADU permitted, it would need a special permit. So you know, there's that piece. In the definitions, we have the definition of a local ADU. So it mimics a protected use ADU, except that we say, you know, 1,200 square feet or 90% of habitable space. Whichever is smaller, the CRC asked, what is the whichever smaller is referring to? So I think we could, you know, add a little clarification there. And then at the end, we had had, you know, specific requirements for a local ADU. So here's the owner occupancy requirement with something filed at the registry. Something about the design, so that its appearance and scale is compatible with the principal dwelling. And it should be accessory to the principal dwelling. You know, here we have the designer view principles. And the provisions of 10.38, those are special permit condition findings. Our current bylaw has language about that in terms of accessory dwelling units. I'm, I'm most of the opinion that these would, could be deleted. And then what we're left with is just to clarify that, you know, the dimensional standards found in the bylaw for accessory structures apply. So that, you know, it's not, you know, it's because we're saying in protected use, it's more permissive. So someone isn't, you know, we're just clarifying what standards apply to a local ADU. So.
Okay.
And yeah, so that's, that's how I'd read. I mean, I, I don't know what people feel about, how people feel about these, the designer view standards or the 10.38 findings.
Angus?
Yeah, I, I personally think those two can be cut. I, I I think the compatibility with the principal dwelling and clearly accessory is more, more important than those.
I would support that personally. Bruce?
I, I do too. I, I think it's one thing for the planning board to be in deliberation on, on the design principles and, and so forth, the dimensional standards. In a, in a, essentially a public forum, but the big difference here is that the building commissioner is not in a public forum. And I guess that we shouldn't obligate them to do the sorts of things that, that we perhaps ask to do, but to do in a, in a way where a fair amount of accountability is you know, pertains. So I, for that reason, I think I would say take B and C out.
So Nate, that's at least three out of six of us.
Sure. Yeah, and so, you know, we've gone through the rest of these requirements, you know, so I think what we would say here we'd have to, you know, modify this again, because some of these we'd want to apply to the local ADUs as well. So I think it's just, you know, how, how you parse out the requirements and how to say that cleanly. And yeah, I mean, I think we could continue this and could come back with a cleaner version. The CRC is meeting at the end of the month. And so, you know, you know, the planning board can have its set of recommendations and the CRC can have its set of recommendations that go, go back to town council. You know, we try to balance the comments so that you see what the CRC said in the, you know, and vice versa. It may be that, you know, the planning board, you recommend this local option and the CRC might not, might not recommend it, right? They might really recommend just the protected use option. And, you know, I think that's okay. And then it becomes something that town council has to reconcile and it's, you know, discussion with staff and, you know, Doug, you could be there and the chair of the CRC. And so, you know, why, you know, essentially what was proposed to council was the two options. And then, you know, what would be just explained back to them is during the hearing process, you know, I mean, I, I would say that the planning board had, you know, had a lot of consideration and thoughts given to what is a local ADU appropriate? And, you know, in the end decided to keep it, here's why. And the CRC, if they decide not to, would say, well, we actually think it's simpler to have one and, you know, we really like the idea of just allowing one ADU on a property. And, you know, now I think, I think that's, I think that's fine, right? I think we've really worked in the past to try to have the same version from planning board and CRC, go to town council, and it may not be, that, that always happens. So.
Well, I mean, we also have, have the option of meeting next Wednesday.
The CRC won't meet till the 28th, so there's not.
Right. I mean, we could meet next Wednesday and hammer it out and be done by the time CRC meets.
Good.
Angus and then Bruce?
I guess I'm just wondering if we could make a motion not to, you know, accept the, the wording here, because it needs to be cleaned up and all of that, but just to make a motion saying that we support having both a local use ADU and protected use ADU. So instead of having a follow-up meeting where we clarify exactly what the words are, we just put ourselves on the record saying we support having both options. The CRC may either endorse that or not. And if they don't, then the council knows that we have two different kind of takes on this document.
Nate, do you think that would fly? Or do we really, we really need to show up with language?
Yeah, I think, you know, in the previous version I had shared, it was for two. And so it'd go back to that. I think, you know, in, under applicability, we'd say like the town of Amherst permits two types of accessory dwelling units, you know, a local ADU and a protected ADU. And then we have the subpoints A and B where we say a local ADU shall meet this. And we'd add that it needs a special permit if it's, comes second. And then it would be the, you know, the definition and these requirements. I think what I would have to do is just make sure that the general requirements that we work through A through L, you know, we I mean, to me, I would say, you know, general requirements for protected use ADU and where applicable, you know, or, you know, as applicable the local ADU. So, you know, if, you know, so some of these might not apply. I, I don't know. I'd have to just see how we'd have to, you know, what we had done before is we had.
Would be to continue.
Yeah, but to continue. I don't think it changes the.
And are you, are you okay with us continuing to the first meeting in September?
Yeah.
I mean, so we'll just prolong the whole process another couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I think, you know, like what Angus was asking was like a straw poll, right? Or kind of just some kind of like a, some consensus if the two, the planning board is gonna go with this two ADU option. You know, I'd bring that back to the CRC and I'd have, you know, what we worked on tonight and then the other version, which doesn't have them. You know, it's just a protected use and they can discuss it as the CRC.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is a couple of people who are advocating strongly for including the local ADU and the rest of us are kind of okay with that. There's no particular objections.
And we can have time to think about it. I don't, you know.
All right, Bruce?
I was going to move a continuance, a continuation. And, and, and I think that effectively Angus achieves your motion, because we're continuing with a constructed text on the table. So I think that that's indicative of how we are, you know, at the mood of the, of the board. So if that would be acceptable to you, that the continuation essentially achieves what you're suggesting, I would move the continu, the, that the hearing be continued to and then. I would move the continu- that the, that the hearing be continued to and then tell me the date and time.
All right, Pam. What is it like September?
Third.
Third?
We have September 3rd or September 17.
Well, I think, do we have a lot on the agenda for the third yet?
No.
Let's go ahead with the third. I think I would like to try to keep this moving.
So we can say 6:35.
Okay.
Okay, so move.
Fred?
Yeah, is there a meeting of the housing subcommittee between then and now? I think there is, right? Because the house subcommittee could kind of go through this line by line at its next meeting. If that's ahead of the full board meeting and then be in pretty good position to move at the board meeting in September. But I don't remember when the next, Jesse, do you remember when the next one is?
We actually don't. I'm just working on those dates now. I was going to send them out to you. We could try and meet next week if we want to. That would be helpful. But no, there's nothing scheduled at the moment.
Selfishly, next week would be great for me.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. I will second it since no one else has. To continue this hearing to September 3rd at 6:35. Fred, your hand is still up. Are you?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion before we vote on a continuation? All right. I guess I'd need to ask, we have a few members of the public that are still here. If any of those members of the public would like to comment on where we're at in this hearing before we continue it, please raise your hand now. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead into our vote. Starting again with Bruce.
I'm an I.
All right. Thank you. Fred?
I.
Jesse?
I.
And Angus?
I.
And Jara?
I.
And I'm an I as well. That's six in favor, one absence. All right, the motion carries. This hearing is continued to our next meeting. Time now is 9:28. We will go to the next item on the agenda, which is planning board elections and reorganization. Nate, I'm going to ask you, should we postpone this again because of Johanna's absence or should we just go ahead? I suppose we could vote her into all the, all the positions in her absence. Couldn't we?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, it's on the agenda. If the board isn't ready to vote tonight, that's fine. I think I just wanted to have it on there to start a discussion. So typically, you know, around this time every year, we vote, you know, officers. It's also a good time to look at committee representatives. So the.
The CPAC representation, that's kind of time sensitive because they get going right around now.
They would, yes. They may have already met over the summer to discuss, you know, discuss their process, but the proposals are due.
Yeah.
September, so.
Well, I know when I, when I did it that one year, I felt like I came in in the middle of the process. All right. So board members, would you like to vote tonight and go through this now? Or should we? I mean, what's the likelihood we're going to have everybody together sometime this fall? It feels like we keep putting it off.
I guess, you know, September 3rd, if we want, you know, we could say vote committee representatives or the, you know, decision signatory and maybe not officers. I don't know if everyone plans to be here on the 3rd of September.
As far as I know.
I plan to be. My baby is due on August 31st. He'll hopefully come late, but just that caveat.
So you'll be sleep deprived even if you're with us.
Yeah, right, exactly. Or extremely anxiously waiting for.
Right, for the beeper to go off.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not going to push it, but Angus, I see your hand.
Well, I'm just wondering if it'd be helpful to hear what Jara might be interested in, especially if he's going to not, not be there for that. And, and I'm also wondering for the Community Preservation Act, how often do they meet?
So they, Nate, do you want to describe it or should I start with my, what I understood from when I did it?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, you know, the Community Preservation Act, so you know, the town has a surcharge on property tax. So, you know, we get a fair amount of money, say it's a million dollars with state funding as well. But the CPA committee has to allocate towards projects for open space, recreation, affordable housing or historic preservation. And they, they call, they, you know, put out a request for proposals which are due at the end of September. And then they meet to review those proposals, hold a public hearing and try to, and make recommendations to town council. And in recent years, they've, they've kind of truncated the process so that, you know, they try to have the recommendations done by the ca- end of the calendar year. So it used to be that it took longer and they met, you know, over an extended period of time. Now they meet, to me, I think it's like, sometimes it's like every Thursday of the month or three Thursdays a month for three months to try to get the recommendations in order. And they want to do that. So it's early in the budget process for the town. So then the CPA, the council and town manager know what the CPA recommendations could be. So I was actually going to look on their webpage. They might actually have their meeting schedule already posted for this coming cycle, but it is, you know, so it's October, November, December. So for three months, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty intense. I don't know, Doug, if you want to add.
Well, I, I mean, it was pretty close to weekly between when the applications are received at the end of September into the, kind of the beginning of December. And so they didn't, you know, they didn't meet over the break between Christmas and New Year's, but they were done by then. And so, but, but among the sort of liaison positions that we have, it is unique in that you have a fairly intense period of activity and then you're done. But pretty much, I mean, there might be one meeting in the spring to talk about what's coming in the next year. And it's also, I thought it was kind of a feel-good committee because you're giving away money. You know, I mean, the hard part is, you know, most of the proposals are, are good ones and you have to choose which ones get money. But you have total flexibility. You can say, we're going to give money to all of them and just distribute it among all of them. So, you know, that's, that was kind of my take. And it, it, it also introduces you to, to the representatives from other town committees who also are liaising onto this committee. So there's somebody from recreation, there's somebody from historic preservation. And so you, you at least get a Zoom acquaintance with some of the other people who support the town in other capacities. Angus, your hand is up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I'd be interested in that one, but I, but I, I'm also open if other people are interested as well.
Yeah, I will, sorry to jump in. I'll also say that it's a, the planning board is a specifically named, I, I think actually in the state legislation as one, you know, town board that would send a representative. They, they do post their packets, so they met in June just to lay out kind of the cycle for this coming year. And then it looks like they have meetings, you know, three in November and three in December.
Okay.
It actually doesn't look like they're meeting in October. So, you know, it looks like over the course of six meetings, which will include a public hearing or two, they hope to have all their recommendations made. So if you went to their, the CPA committee webpage and then looked at their packets, Angus, if you want to, so you could see some more information.
Okay. Well, Nate, do you think we should vote any of these tonight? I mean, like if Angus is excited about CPAC and nobody else has an objection or wants to compete for that. You know, is it, would, would it help CPAC for us to do that sooner rather than later?
It would. I mean, I think we could, you know, vote, vote, you know, one tonight. And if we didn't vote DRB rep, for instance, we could do that at the next meeting. But I, I think given the, you know, the sequence and timing for CPA, if Angus is interested, I think Johanna last time, seems like she had some commitments in the fall or something. There was always something that didn't work.
Yeah, well, I mean, we didn't have a representative last year and it, that was really unfortunate that we weren't able to wrangle anybody. So Angus, if you are, you know, amenable, looks like Jara and Bruce are ready to nominate you.
That's exactly what, that's exactly right. Yeah, I motioned to nominate Angus as our representative for CPAC.
Second.
And Bruce?
I second.
Okay. All right. So any discussion? All right. Do we have to formally vote this, Nate? Okay, all right. So no discussion, we'll go right to our vote. Starting with you, Bruce.
I.
And then Fred?
I.
And then Jesse?
I.
And then Angus?
I.
And Jara?
I.
All right. Congratulations Angus. And I, I'm an I as well. I'm sorry. Six in favor.
Angus, don't you know in politics, it's the tradition to vote for the other guy?
It used to be.
We didn't have a straw man. Okay, great. So we'll do the other positions later. And, and Nate, is it true that our vote was actually just a recommendation to Paul?
For?
For Angus to be the representative? And then Paul actually formalizes it?
Right. And then typically it tends, is reviewed by council. So I'll send that along and, you know, Angus, we can be in touch. And if you have any questions about the CPA committee too, let me know. Their webpage is pretty good. So yeah, yeah, no, we'll forward that on. It's a recommendation of the town manager.
Right.
All the more reason to have done this tonight, I think.
Yeah, I can, I can, I think it, sometimes it takes the town manager a little while to.
Took six months to get me onto the commission, remember?
Right. Okay, so we'll come back to more of that in, in our, our next meeting. So well, let's put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Could I speak real, really quick, Doug?
Sure, Jara.
Sorry, I was just going to say, just in case I am absent for the next one, when elections are held, the only position that I'm interested in is being on the housing subcommittee. So I just wanted to state that for, for you all.
Okay.
Sure. Part of the agenda item is also, you know, signing of decisions if we're moving on. And, you know, there's no requirement that all, the, all board members sign decisions. And so it's been a local practice. You know, and in terms of, you know, if it's necessary, I think sometimes it ta- it can, it takes time to get a lot of the decisions. And then often board members ask if staff could sign on their behalf. And so, you know, I would recommend that we have the chair or their designee sign a decision. You know, some communities don't have any decision or any signature. Staff will sign or they just, you know, have a stamp saying approved. So I think it's, you know, it'll, you know, we have the new decision format. And if we have one signature, I think we can then get decisions out faster after the hearings closed. And to me, that's important. You know, I don't know how the board feels about it, but I would still send the decision out for the board to review, provide staff any comments, but really we only have them the chair sign or their designee.
Okay, Bruce?
Given that we've taken the time, about 45 seconds for Nate to make the case for this, it sounds to me to be extremely intelligent and I would move that that we adopt the process of a signal, signature of the chair on decisions approved by the vote of the board. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Angus?
Second.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Gee, we should have left all the motions till this time of night and we can just run, run through them. Okay, once again, this time I'll start with Jara.
I.
All right, Angus?
Yes.
Jesse?
I.
And Fred?
I.
And Bruce?
Yep.
And I'm an I as well. That's six in favor. All right, so we have accomplished that as well. And Nate, I assume there are no further steps with that? I mean, staff can just incorporate that into the documents that you produce and coordinate with the chair and there's nothing else needs to happen?
No, you know, in, in the bylaw and in the rules and regs, we would say the board. And I think, you know, historically, we would say, well, it says the board, it's the whole board. You know, I looked at some other communities where staff will sign on behalf of the board and it says the board. And so they, you know, if we wanted to amend the rules and regulations, we could just to add that clarification and we could say that it's an annual vote every year. I don't know that it's necessary. I think, you know, we'll record this vote and we can move forward just doing that.
Okay. All right. Time is 9:41 and I, unless somebody else wants to jump in and volunteer for a committee, tonight we will leave the rest of this for next time. General housing discussion, number seven on the agenda. Given the hour, Nate, is there anything we absolutely need to talk about that tonight?
No, the housing subcommittee met and talked about kind of the rationale. So, you know, there'll be an updated document that can be sent out. I think we really talked about when, you know, September, October, having a meeting, you know, outside of a normal planning board meeting, whether it's in some, you know, some location in town to invite residents to comment on the overlay. So yeah, I think we're working through it. I, we'll, we can discuss it at the next meeting. You know, I think, you know, it gets down to the details, like what type of housing units or housing type do we want, you know, from mixed use to apartments or social dormitories? What are some standards there? And you know, that hasn't been solidified. So it's really still kind of talking about, right, what's the right approach in terms of setback and density? And I think there was, you know, some discussion about, you know, three stories near the street and then six behind and having some provisions for, you know, a multi-use path and some design standards and open space requirements, but it hasn't been finalized at all. I think it's still, you know, it's, it's the rough document that was reviewed by the board previously. So I think it's been refined a little bit, but there's still a lot of questions. I think, you know, I've reached out to different departments. I need to kind of follow up and hear from them. I know that, you know, public safety had some concerns at one point and the sewer line would need to be replaced if some of this happened. So there's questions about how, who would pay for that. But I still think, you know, it's a, it's a concept worth pursuing. And I think that we're trying to figure out when and I forget actually if we had a, we had a tentative date, maybe in October, maybe.
I think it was in coordination with one of our, one of the town councillors up there and their regular constituent meeting. I will say, I feel like we ought to have something that's more concrete before that meeting so that we give something, we give the residents something to react to rather than saying, hey, what do you want? Or what do you think? I mean, that just could be a free for all.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I feel like we have the district boundary. We have step back, you know, setbacks from Meadow Street and North Pleasant. We have some dimensional standards. I think it's then a question for the board and housing subcommittee, you know, what are the housing types you want to permit, how to permit them and how, how much design standards do we have? Or is it really, really flexible? So, you know, you can, you know, behind 300 and 400 feet from the streets, you can have six stories. And we're not going to have provisions for open space or, or, you know, I think, that's where I think the discussion has to go, right? Otherwise it's, you know, we could submit a bylaw that's very simple and a lot of it's left up through the permitting process. It's really then through the permitting, we'll know what the site looks like. I, you know, is that acceptable?
The board makeup will influence what's allowed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm planning on working on that in the next few weeks. So yeah, I think we could talk, if we talk about it two more times, I think we'd be ready for the public.
Okay. All right. Time is 9:45. Any old business that was not anticipated? Nope.
No.
Yeah, how about new business? Nope.
No.
Form A and R subdivision applications? No? Form A and R subdivision applications? No, nothing? ZBA applications, anything we might want to see?
No.
SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
Nothing new.
We had mentioned, you know, the three sixty-three Main Street, Bruno's
Right.
Pizza, so they, they, you know, they're working on an application. It'll be a site plan review with a special permit application, so it had a special permit from, I think, the nineties. So, you know, when that's ready, it'll come to the board. There, you know, right now, there's a, a restaurant, a pizza, you know, pizza place, and then apartments, they want to add an apartment and reduce the size of the commercial space, so it'll be considered a mixed-use building. They're not making many changes at all to the exterior of the site. It's really, you know, interior changes, so.
Okay. All right, time is nine forty-six. Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Bruce, anything for PVPC?
No, there's, there's an upcoming meeting. It'll be a face-to-face meeting, but that doesn't happen yet.
Okay. Jesse, anything for Housing Subcommittee?
Just heard about it.
Okay. And with Karen gone, we don't have a DRB representative. We will need another person to serve on that board. Angus?
Yeah, I'm not volunteering to serve on that one, but I was just gonna say, I know, my understanding is the Planning Board at one point had a zoning Subcommittee as well. And that's something that in future meetings, I'd like to, to talk a little bit more about. I, there are, I had a conversation with Rob Mora, and it's, and there's a lot of things in the zoning bylaw that could, could be simplified, it would make his life a lot easier, that aren't necessarily housing-related. So just something that I'm thinking about in the, in the coming months.
Okay. Fred?
Yeah, on that, on that topic, I, I agree. I, in my first six years on the Planning Board, for the latter four of those six years, yes, we had a zoning Subcommittee, and I chaired it. So I, yeah, I, I, I think that you make an excellent point, and I think that that, I don't, I don't think that should have been done away with.
You and me, Fred.
All right, so I will make one comment about, sort of on that topic, and that is, I do hope, I, I hope we can fill all the sort of required positions that we are expected to be liaisons with. And I don't want Subcommittee participation to make that hard or, or impossible. So please re, please be considerate with your time, and, and just keep in mind, we, we do have a couple of other positions that need to be filled. Otherwise, I don't have any, I don't have any report from Chair. Nate, anything from you guys? How's your staffing? Have you hired anybody lately?
No, there is the search for the Director of Planning and Economic Development, so that's ongoing. I think the hope is to have someone in the position by, say, October one.
Have you got all the sort of lower levels positions filled?
We do, so, you know, there's, you know, two planners, and then we have a part-time housing planner, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, nothing else from staff?
No, I was gonna, you know, to Angus's point, you know, about how a zoning Subcommittee, you know, I would like to think that, right, we could make efficiencies in the zoning bylaw, and then have time at the planning, at the full Planning Board to talk about whether it's zoning or planning projects or planning, you know, initiatives. It ends up being difficult when every, you know, you know, a zoning amendment can, it takes a lot to, to discuss, and a project review takes a lot, so, you know, I think, I agree with Doug that, you know, there are a few liaisons that we should have in the zoning Subcommittee, you know, it can talk about any parts of the zoning bylaw. Staff can also initiate it. Sometimes it's nice to have a forum for it, and so that's where the zoning Subcommittee would come into play. Two members would be fine. You know, it has to be posted, you know, it could meet, you know, it has to have, you know, it follows public, public meeting, open meeting law. So minutes have to be taken, agendas posted. And then the idea would be, really, that any Subcommittee of the Planning Board, I would want to have direction from the Planning Board. So, you know, you can come to the Planning Board, say, here's, you know, ten things that staff think could be fixed. The board could discuss how to prioritize them, and, you know, Rob or others could have ideas. I agree, there are some things that seem simple, and then it might take longer than we think. But, yeah, I think it's worth looking at, you know, some, some parts of that, so. I don't, you know, I just, you know, if the board thinks we have time at our regular meetings to start putting in zoning, we could.
Well, I mean, you know, between you and Pam, you keep track of what's on, what, what, what each of our meetings is gonna be, what needs to be on the agenda, and so if we have a meeting where it seems like we're gonna have a fairly light agenda, we could certainly insert some of that.
Right.
I mean, I know we've talked about things we could do to the general bylaw, to the general zoning bylaw, in, you know, a couple of years ago, but
Right.
That, that list is probably still around. Okay, so I guess we have come to the end of another Planning Board meeting. Time is nine fifty-one on my computer, so if it, does anybody have anything else? We'll wait, we'll wait to hear from Bruce, our invitation to his social event. And otherwise, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, and we'll see you on September third. Have a good Labor Day.
Yeah.
And good luck, Jara, with your new arrival.
Thank you. I'll need it.
Good night.
Recording stopped.
All right.
Shutting this down. Good night. See you soon.
Yep, bye.
Bye.